Good evening. I call this meeting the Carrollton Farmers Branch ISD Board of Trustees to order at 7:00 PM on April 5th, 2012. Please join me in standing as James Goode leads the board's opening prayer.
Let us pray. Loving Father, we are truly thankful for this beautiful and wonderful day you blessed us with, but especially for this opportunity this evening to come here that we can be focused on the affairs of this school district, but especially on the success of all of our students. Father, we are mindful though of those, especially who have suffered loss during the tornadoes of this past week. We ask that you will encourage us to be not only mindful of those individuals, but help us to be able to support them and help them in any way that we can. Fathers, as this week rose to a close, we're mindful of the Easter holidays this weekend and for the time for the students to have rest from their studies and for all of our educators to have this time to rest and prepare for the following week, but especially help us to always realize how important you are in our lives, that we have this opportunity to more focus on you. Father, we especially ask that you help us and be especially with our students as they continue to experience academic success and help us that we may always be an encouragement. And at this time, Father, be with this meeting, be with the activities. May we do this in such a manner that your name will be glorified. And this is our prayer in your loving Son's name. Amen.
Amen.
Please remain standing as Richard Fleming leads the board in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated. At this time, I'd like to give Dr. Burns a moment to say a few words.
Yes. Good evening, everyone, and welcome. Thank you for being here tonight. We want to take a minute to recognize in memory of a very special person to the CFP family that we lost last month. Dr. Mary Hopkins, who was with the district over 20 years, passed away at the end of March. And I would just like to extend on behalf of the board, the administration, and all our staff, certainly our condolences to the family, but also that just memory of how special Dr. Hopkins was to us, not only as an employee, but as a friend as well. So if you would join me in a moment of silence, please.
Thank you, Dr. Burns. At this time, we'll continue with our board meeting. As a district, we dedicate all our efforts and resources to the education and preparation of all students. The board uses this mission to guide all deliberations, decisions, and actions. You will get to see all deliberations, decisions, and actions of the board in open session, with the exception of some items which may be discussed in a closed session, as stipulated in the Texas Government Code, Section 551, commonly known as the Open Means Law. For the record, the board is all here except for Ms. Chaffin, who is not able to attend tonight. We do constitute a quorum and can conduct business on behalf of the district. That being said, I'll turn the meeting over to Dr. Burns for agenda item 1A, welcome and recognition of special guest. Dr. Burns?
Thank you, Ms. Klein. Again, welcome, everyone. We have a great crowd tonight, standing room only. I don't think opening day at the Rangers will be this crowded. Do you think? Anyway, thank you for being here. Our first recognition tonight will be our VIP program. Tonight, we honor our newest members in a very important profession of teaching program. We've been honoring VIPs for over 25 years in Carrollton Farmers Branch. Our VIP program is our way of saying thank you to our professional staff for being innovative leaders in learning, who diligently work to meet the needs of all our students. We want to recognize their efforts in making our schools a great place for quality learning to occur. To our honored guests, the Board of Trustees and the administration say thank you for being a member of the Carrollton Farmers Branch ISD team and for being an innovator who has a positive influence on the lives of students. Educators, please come forward when your principal introduces you to receive your certificate. If there are staff members, friends, and family here tonight to celebrate this recognition, please stand as your VIP is introduced. And now, at this time, Ms. Klein, would you join me in the front to honor our special guests?
Good evening, Dr. Burns, Mrs. Klein, members of the board. I'm Rosie Oliveta, Principal of the Early College High School, and I'm here tonight to recognize Joe Cruck as a member of the very important profession of teaching. Joe is in his fifth year as a history teacher with the Early College High School. He's passionate about increasing student achievement and constantly works to elevate his craft as an educator through staff development and independent study. The performance of his students by any measure is beyond reproach. Nancy Adams, one of his colleagues, said of Joe, "He comes up with phenomenal lessons to engage his class. Whenever I observe his class, I don't walk away with a nugget. I have a whole bag of gold to take back to my classroom. I don't think there's another teacher that has so many excited kids in his class." Janine Powell, another colleague, said, "As an English teacher, I know that I always have to share the teaching credit with Mr. Cruck when our students receive high tax scores. They learn as much about writing and history as they do in English." Another colleague, Louis Harville, said, "He gives students the opportunity to explore, understand, and form their own opinion, and then forces them to defend that opinion. He creates healthy competition in the classroom that drives learning." Joe also devotes extra time and effort to build relationship with his students. They had this to say about him, "He makes the activities interesting through discussion, and he takes time to find interesting articles for us to read, too," said Riad. And Henry said, "He genuinely wants to teach his students. He knows how to interact with kids. He'll even play basketball with us." Joe contributes greatly to the culture of our program and to the achievement of our students. Early College High School and CFP are indeed fortunate and blessed to have Joe Cruck as a member of the very important profession of teaching.
Mrs. Klein, and Dr. Burns, and members of the board, my name is Joe Pouncy. I'm principal at Newman Smith High School, and I'm pleased to introduce our newest VIP, Mr. Michael Casey. Mr. Casey is from the Upper Midwest, somewhere. You see, he moved 13 times before he was 14, but we just list him somewhere from being in the, from the Upper Midwest. He attended Purdue University, graduating with a BS degree in mechanical engineering. The early part of his career was spent at Western House Electric Company, and in 1981, he started his own company that designed, manufactured, and installed custom electrical equipment for the oil and gas industry. From 1999 to 2002, Mr. Casey was the general manager of a fiber optic company in the area until he decided to retool himself by changing careers and becoming a teacher. Mr. Casey joined the Newman Smith faculty in 2007 and has taught geometry, algebra II, pre-calculus, AP stats. He loves teaching kids. Mr. Casey is a problem solver. He has been a key player in our program to monitor the progress of our ninth and 10th graders in math and to correct certain problems that they are having. Additionally, Mr. Casey is extremely competitive. His students compete for the bestable trophy. Now, let me explain that. That's B-E-S-T hyphen A-B-L-E, the bestable trophy, every couple of weeks. Actually, this trophy started out as the best table, B-E-S-T T-A-B-L-E, best table award given to students that outperformed their peers on assignments. The award just kind of evolved to its current name. By the way, in the bestable award, the largest trophy goes to the third-place winning table. Now, let's figure that out. The largest and best trophy to third place. Only an engineer from Purdue will have it this way. You just go figure. Just go figure. Mr. Casey is married to Celeste, and they have lived in Farmers Branch for 39 years. They have, is it two children? Two? Three. Three adult children and one grandchild. For over, well, for over 50 years, Mr. Casey has been an avid sailor. Also, he enjoys woodworking, gardening, and playing with his board of colleagues, Chip and Chica the cat. Mr. Casey is an award-winning chef. He recently won a barbecue contest for his brisket and is now training for a 40-mile bicycle ride next month. Now, Mr. Casey can scare you sometimes. Instead of greeting you with a friendly good morning each day, he starts the day with, "I have an idea." Mr. Casey is a creative man. We thank him for his creative spirit, friendship, and passion for teaching. Please welcome our VIP, Michael Casey.
Ms. Klein, Dr. Burns, members of the board, members of the board, members of the community, my name's Georgia Mornock, and I have the pleasure of serving as the principal at Arle Turner High School. It is my honor to introduce our newest member of the very important profession of teaching, Mrs. Seegers is not only a lifelong learner, she is a lifelong lion. She graduated from Arle Turner in 1999, and after earning her degree at Texas A&amp;M, she returned to the Dallas area. After teaching in a neighboring district for one year, she jumped at the chance to return home to Turner, where she has spent the past eight years teaching social studies, serving as our cheerleading coach, and instructional facilitator. Just this week, I received this email from a parent. "I want to tell you about a great teacher you have at Turner. Mrs. Seegers goes beyond her teaching role. I have two daughters and her cheer program. She's been a positive influence on them. My oldest daughter was having trouble in her math class, and once Ms. Seegers found out, she not only talked to her, but she went to tutoring with her and was willing to relearn pre-calculus so she could help her. I know she has a lot of students, but she always takes the time to make me feel like mine are right on the top of her list. She lives her life the same way she teaches it. My 15-year-old came home the other day and said, 'Ms. Seegers was the type of person you want to be next to, because she's always happy and uplifting.'" And coming from a 15-year-old, that is a very high compliment. I visited with her students, and this is what they had to say. "She has a laugh everyone knows and enjoys." And if you have heard Ms. Seegers laugh, you know that this is true. Coach Seegers is an honorable woman that cares a lot about what she does. Even if you're sad, honestly, you will leave her class feeling way better. It is very clear to me that Ms. Seegers enjoys her job as a teacher, and she does everything possible to make us enjoy it just as much. As her nephew calls her Aunt Haha, a student wrote that Ms. Seegers is ha-ha hilarious. "Ms. Seegers is the most joyful, enthusiastic teacher I've had so far. Her personality is out of this world. She makes learning exciting, and finally, she's beautiful." Her teaching partner, Ms. Buntain, said, "I've known Heather since she was a junior at Turner, and I now have the distinct pleasure of teaching with her. Watching her joy in teaching is something everyone should experience, and I could not be more proud of her. Dedicated to her family as a newlywed wife, sister, aunt, and daughter. Ms. Seegers believes in all children and works to make our school and community a better place every day. We're so lucky she's at CFP. I love Heather. We're blessed."
For our next recognition tonight, we have our National Merit Award recipients. Tonight, we'll begin our recognition of students who have been honored for their achievement in the National Merit Program, as well as other significant academic accomplishments. Tonight first will be Principal of Newman Smith High School, Mr. Joe Pouncy. Mr. Pouncy?
Each year, approximately 1.5 million students enter the competition for merit scholarship awards when they take the extremely tough PSAT exam as high school juniors. Now, from that number, about 16,000 students are selected as National Merit semifinalists. This is one-third of the 50,000 high scorers on the test. From that number, about 15,000 scholars, and in this region, about 8,400, are selected as National Merit finalists, meaning they can continue in the competition for merit scholarship awards. Also, more than two-thirds, about 34,000 students out of the 50,000 high scorers, are selected as National Merit Commended Scholars. Also, in 1983, the National Hispanic Recognition Program was initiated to recognize approximately 5,000 Hispanic-Latino students selected from a pool of 235,000 who took the PSATS juniors. These are the highest-scoring Hispanic-Latino students to take the PSAT in America. The National Achievement Scholarship Program honors students that scored in the top 3% of more than 160,000 Black Americans on the PSATS juniors. Again, these students are among the top-scoring African-Americans in the country that took the PSAT. For the fourth consecutive year, a Newman Smith student has been selected as a Gates Millennium Scholars Program finalist. The Gates Millennium Scholarship Program, founded by the Bill and Melinda Gates Foundation, annually selects 1,000 talented students to receive a Good Through Graduation Scholarship that can be used at any college or university in the world. Additionally, for the first time in its history, a team of high school students led by one of our National Hispanic Recognition Program scholars and a member of the International Business Academy, has won the prestigious University of North Texas Murphy Center for Entrepreneurship Award for a business startup. UNT gave this student $30,000 in venture capital to initiate his startup business, forward tutoring, an internet-based business that tutors college and secondary students. Students, when I call your name, will you please come forward? And parents, will you kindly stand? We're going to start with our National Achievement Scholars. Our first scholar is Angel Chapman. Ms. Chapman?
Is she here?
And everyone, just kind of hold your applause, applause, as we get through this. Mother is Farida Chapman. Angel will attend the University of Pennsylvania, where she received a scholarship, and she will major in English. Neil Miles Davis, where's Neil Miles? Come on up. Parents are, now, hold your applause and, 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 okay? All right. Neil Miles Davis, parents are Meredith and Ray Buckley. College undecided, but he said he will major in mechanical or aeronautical engineering. Now, our National Hispanic Recognition Program Scholars. Roxanna Benitez, is Roxanna here? Come on up. Parents are Joel and Petra Benitez. Roxanna will attend Austin College and major in political science. Monica Barreco, parents are Aturo and Esther Barreco, will attend the University of Texas at Austin and major in international business and accounting. She's a member of the International Business Academy as well. J.J. Enchanis, J.J. Enchanis, where is he? Now, parents are Enrique and Myrta Enchanis. College, I think he has decided about going to Yale. And he's a member of the International Business Academy at Smith. J.J. formed a team that won the $30,000 Murphy Center for Entrepreneurship Venture Capital Award for a new business startup from the University of North Texas. Also, J.J. is a Gates Millennium Scholar finalist. Our National Merit Commended Scholars are Malin Blake, is she here? Okay, she may not be here. Oh, he. I've been calling him, well, never mind. Well, Malin is not here, but probably somewhere studying. Will attend Brigham Young University. We have Josh Borja. Where's Josh? Thank you, Josh. Parents are Philip and Kelly Borja, will attend Liberty University and major in electrical engineering and missions. Natasha Gerst, parents are Bill and Karen. I don't know if she's here. Okay, she will attend SMU. She's probably there studying right now. They major in engineering. Cicely Golden, where's Ms. Golden? Parents are Pam and Mike Golden, will attend Oklahoma State University and major in biochemistry. Christine Karin, Karin, now, I said, I practice this, Karin, uh, Car- Caravith, that's it. And I practice that all evening, evening, too. Parents are Anita and Nick, will attend the University of Texas at Austin and major in accounting and project management. Kaylee Rinfro, parents are Jana and Craig, will attend Newman University and major in We have Krista Smith, parents are Donna and Paul, will attend St. Olaf College, or is it Florida State University? Will major in core music education, vocal performance. Where's Joy Seo? Parents are Young and Boo Seo, will attend St. John's University and major in business Melissa Smith, okay, Melissa is not here tonight. Parents are Jim and Diane, but she will attend University of Pittsburgh and major in chemical engineering. Tracy Stevens, okay, Tracy's with Melissa studying. Parents are Brenda and David, will attend Bernard College in New York and major in economics and math. Emily Zicoli, parents are Zeke and Sandy, will attend the University of Oklahoma and major in pre-physical therapy. Kevin Chan, parents are Cindy and Hinson Chan, will attend the University of Texas at Austin and major in chemistry. Michael Schrock, parents are Roxanne and Richard, will attend the University of Tulsa or SMU, which one? Mike? He's not here. Okay. He's, yeah, probably with the girls. Anyway, Michael is a dandy. He's all state everything, and we'll talk about him later. Diana Pop, Diana, parents are Caitlin and Corina. College, will attend the American University and major in international studies. Tanya Rajan, parents are Gita and Vimbar Rajan, will attend, I believe, Rice University? I'm not certain about your major. Last but not least, we have Rebecca Reeves. Parents are Susan and Ron Reeves, will attend the University of Oklahoma and major in early childhood education. Let's hear it for our National Merit Scholars.
You squeeze anywhere you want to.
Thank you, very much.
Yes, take two rows, Miss Stevens. Okay, two rows.
Thank you.
These are the best in America, folks. They're going to figure this out.
Okay, everybody look at me. One, two, three. One more. One, two, three. Thank you.
And for our next recognition, we'll have Ms. Georgia Mornock, Principal of Arle Turner High School. Ms. Mornock?
Thank you. I'm going to thank Mr. Pouncy for the introduction about the National Merit Program and just get right to our students. So it's my pleasure to introduce our National Merit finalists. First, we have Ms. Shifa Mirza. Shifa, if your parents will please stand. Shwaba Anabas Mirza. She attended elementary school in Connecticut and middle school at the Islamic School of Irving. She's currently a member of the Arle Turner Senior Exec and has donated countless hours of community service to the American Red Cross, charity clinics, and hospitals. Shifa plans to attend the University of Texas at Dallas and pursue a degree in biomedical engineering and pre-med. Ms. Angel Webb is the daughter of Kristen Napweb and Walter Webb. She attended McCoy Elementary School and DeWitt Perry Middle School. Angel is currently the vice president of the Arle Turner GSA and participated on the varsity volleyball team for two years. She's a member of the National Honor Society, Mu Alpha Theta Spanish Honor Society, and plans to attend the University of Oklahoma to pursue a degree in political science. Our National Merit Commended Scholars, Mr. David Katter, who I believe is with Mr. Pouncy's students at SMU studying, but is the son of Kim and David Katter, who plans to attend Brickhaven Community College and then transfer to UT Dallas to pursue a degree in mechanical engineering and is a member of Metza. Jasmine Escher is the daughter of Sharon and Bart Escher. She attended McLaughlin Elementary School and Vivian Field Middle School. Jasmine is a member of the RLT National Honor Society Senior Exec and Mu Alpha Theta. She's performed in a cappella choir and several musical productions throughout high school. Jasmine plans to attend the University of Southern California and pursue a degree in theater and journalism. Next, we have Ms. Dan Lee, who's the daughter of Hayson Lee and Hun Lee, and she is also studying with her compadres at Newman Smith. She has been a member of orchestra for all four years and plans to attend either UT Austin or Rice University, majoring in languages and literature. Next, we have Matt Scrutter. He's the son of Michelle and Randy Scrutter, who attended Thompson Elementary School and Ted Polk Middle School. Matt is a member of Arle Turner's AMAT Academy, has been involved with the Farmers Branch Youth Leadership Program. He's participated in honor band for four years and been a section leader for two. He plans to attend the University of North Texas, pursuing a degree in musical performance. Michael West is the son of Lynn and Victor West. He attended elementary school at Carrollton Christian Academy and Blalack Middle School. He's a member of Arle Turner's AMAT Academy and currently Secretary of the National Honor Society. He is a key leader of the Robotics Club and associate editor of the print and online school newspaper. Michael plans to attend the University of Texas at Dallas and pursue a double major in computer science and molecular biology. And last, we have Shoheb Varani, who is on a scholarship interview at the University of Texas today. Shoheb is an Eagle Scout and plans to attend UT at Austin to pursue a major in biomedical engineering. It's our pleasure to get to work with these outstanding students and their families every day. Congratulations.
One, two, three. Thank you, congratulations.
Our next recognition tonight is our business partner. And tonight, we are honoring a very special person, but he could be our business person, he could be our citizen person, he could be everything. We could recognize Willie Rainwater every day of the week for what he does for this district and this community. But tonight, as our business partner, we are proud to recognize Willie Rainwater and his lovely wife, Wanita, for their significant contributions to our district. Now, Board Member James Goode will read their recognition. Ms. Rainwater, Mr. Rainwater, will you please join us at the front?
Tonight, on behalf of Carrollton Farmers Branch Independent School District Board of Trustees, it is our honor to recognize Wanita and Willie Rainwater for their involvement in our partnership and education program. We are blessed to have a relationship with the Rainwater family. Their constant partnership is an example of what is Their constant partnership is an example of what is possible when a public school and a community of caring individuals work together to be partners in the education and welfare of all of our students. Mr. and Mrs. Rainwater have partnered over the years to encourage and assist our students and families with their education. The Rainwaters have given generously of their time to the students, staff, and families in our district. They have given Black History Month presentations at campuses across our district, positively impacting and enriching the education of our students. And for this, we are so grateful. For many years, the Rainwaters and their organization, Christ Community Connection, have allowed our students to be involved in their annual Martin Luther King Junior Parade. And as a board, we are also privileged to be a part of this wonderful parade each year. Not only do the Rainwaters give of their time and energy, they give scholarships to CFB students so that they can continue their education after high school. There have been many students across our district whose lives have been touched by their generosity. The Rainwater family has a deep history of giving to this school district and community. Willie's mother, Annie Head's Rainwater, championed integration in Carrollton Farmers Branch ISD. In September 1963, the district's schools were integrated and her vision became a reality. In 1994, the district named Annie Head's Rainwater Elementary in her honor as a tribute to her strength, courage, and convictions. Students across our district have been touched by the Rainwater through their generous gifts of time and talent, and we are indeed grateful to their partnership and commitment to this district. On behalf of the Carrollton Farmers Branch Independent School District Board of Trustees, and with Nancy Klein President and Dr. Bobby Burns Superintendent presenting, it is our privilege to present this plaque to Willie and Juanita Rainwater. Your family truly exemplifies a meaningful partnership between our community and our school. Accepting this plaque are Willie and Juanita Rainwater.
That completes our recognition, but we do have some announcements, school district announcements we'd like to share with you. So if you turn your attention to the screen, please.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. We are students from the Academy for Media Arts and Technology at Aral Turner High School. We are very pleased to present to you tonight the board announcements for the month of April. For the past two years, Dr. Burns and his leadership team have met with the faculty and staff of the schools that earned either exemplary or recognized ratings for the 2010-2011 school year through the Texas Education Agency's Accountability System. An amazing 31 CFB ISD schools earned either one of those ratings last year. Dr. Burns and his team visited Janey Stark Elementary last month, where the school was recognized with an exemplary rating last year. Way to go, Mustangs.
With all these great schools, it's no wonder people are talking about CFB ISD. Have you heard the great things parents, staff, and community members are saying about CFB ISD? Check out our testimonials or share your story about CFB ISD at www.cfbiisd.edu/testimonials. And speaking of great things to talk about, we want to thank everyone who came out to Casey's Run. It was a huge success. Proceeds from the event benefit the All-Stars, our Special Olympics team for CFB. We had a beautiful day for the race and once again want to thank everyone who came out to walk, run, or to support this wonderful cause.
And if it was not for great causes like Casey's Run, we would never be able to host events like the outstanding CFB ISD Special Olympics Track and Field Meet that was held last month at Standard Stadium. The annual event draws athletes from districts all over Texas that cannot afford to host such an event due to limited coaches and budget. This is the event of the year for Special Olympics athletes and volunteers alike.
CFB ISD supports the Special Olympics with the help of proceeds from the annual Casey's Run. Funds from this event provide opportunities for special education students at no cost to them. The experience enriches their lives by promoting relationships and building confidence.
That's it for tonight's announcements. Our next regular school board meeting is Thursday, May 3rd at 7:00 PM in the boardroom of the Administration Building, 1445 North Perry Road, Carrollton. There will also be a board work-study session on April 19th at 6:30 PM in the boardroom of the Administration Building. That's it for this month's announcements. Everyone have a great, relaxing weekend. Good night.
We have many things going on in the spring, and so we don't always capture all the announcements, but I do want to take this moment to remind everyone that we had four teams make the soccer playoffs. We have three teams still in the soccer playoffs. Yeah, absolutely. So I'm gonna give you a little statistic here. There are 335 4A boys' soccer teams. 271 of them are home, okay? There are only 64 still playing. Aral Turner Boys is one of them, okay? And the girls? Thank you. In the girls' soccer, in our girls' soccer, Creekview and Aral Turner Girls, Creekview Girls, Aral Turner Girls are playing tomorrow night. And in the girls' soccer in 4A, there are 328 teams, and there are only 64 left, and we have two teams out of that 64. And after this week, there'll only be 32 after Friday night. So congratulations to all our soccer teams, but certainly best wishes to Turner Boys, Turner Girls, and Creekview Girls, although they're playing each other, so somebody's gonna have to lose. Somebody's gonna have to win, so we're gonna have another team the next round for sure. So congratulations to all those teams.
Thank you, Dr. Burns. I'd like to thank the schools for presenting your VIPs to us tonight and helping us, letting us help you honor them. The VIPs are, particularly the ones that are returning students, remind us of the successes and the really good-hearted people we have working in our schools. And the reason why we're all here is our students, which are National Merit, different levels of recognition, and other Gates Millennial and other scholarships and all the outstanding things y'all do. That's why all the levels are here. Elementary, middle, and high school is to work to produce the successes that y'all demonstrate and others that we'll be recognizing. We thank your parents for choosing our school district, and we thank y'all for working hard to help us succeed at our mission of high achievement for all students. Mr. and Mrs. Rainwater, your partnership with our schools exemplifies what it means to be involved in your community, in your school district, and with all the students, because ultimately, that's where, you know, your focus is. And we thank you for the professional way in which you demonstrate this. And we thank you very much. And Mr. Goode, I believe you wanted to say something at this point?
Yes, ma'am. This past weekend, I was at a meeting in Austin. And I had a group of North Texas School Board Trustees approach me, not knowing what they were wanting to ask or say. I, of course, was cautious. However, they came up and said Carrollton Farmers Branch is accomplishing high academic results, and you have the numbers to prove it. Their question was, how are you doing it? We need to learn from you how to be successful. And I thought, now that I can enjoy listening to. But what I'd like to say to our administrators at all the many campuses, thank you for how you lead each and every campus in this school district. But especially to the teachers and to the VIPs, I want you to know that because of you, it is truly an honor to represent you and this school district as a board trustee. Thank you.
At this time, I'm gonna make a brief announcement. We're going to take a 10-minute break, and then we'll come back and we'll do Agenda Item 2, which is Report by Superintendent with three presentations. And then after that, we'll go into the next Agenda Item 3, which is Board Operations, which 3A is Audience for Guests. During our break that we're about to take, which if any of y'all choose to leave, I guess that's okay, we're gonna have some paperwork outside the door for signing up for Audience for Guests. And Ms. Sharon Scrivener here at the corner of our table will be receiving our request for Audience for Guests. We ask that the comments pertaining to public education issues can be no longer than three minutes, but anyone wishing to speak, either as an individual or as a representative of a group, we really do welcome your comments. So at this time, it is about 7:46, and we're gonna take about 10 minutes and see y'all back here, those that want to hear our next operations. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Klein. Members of the board, we've been talking for many months about the new accountability system and the new acronym STAR and what it means. And you've heard STAR, and of course, exam. You've wrestled with the confusion under the 15% that we've talked about the last couple of months. And so we wanted to, as always, give you an up-to-date with where the accountability system is currently and to give you as much information about it as possible. So at this time, I'll turn it over to Dr. Mayor, who will introduce Ms. Edmondson. So, Dr. Mayor?
Thank you, Dr. Burns. In this district, we study a guru on change named John Cotter. And one of the things that John Cotter teaches us about change is that a common error people make when change is around is that we undercommunicate the change. We don't want to do that with this very, very important part of our work, our accountability system. We know it's new. There are a lot of changes, so we may bring this to you several times over the next year or so so that we could all have a good understanding on how the state is going to assess our progress on student learning. It's a complicated system. It's definitely supposed to be more rigorous, more challenging than what we have had in the past. So we continue to raise the bar. There's a very strong college readiness assessment piece. So Cory Edmondson is our person in charge of working with us on this. And I want to tell you a little bit about Cory. Cory says, "I told you this last year when she spoke, but I'm gonna tell it to you again." You know, once is never enough with this kind of information, right? Cory is our Coordinator of State Testing, Data Analysis, and Accountability. Cory has been with us in the district for 10 years. She received her bachelor's and master's from UNT. She taught 4th grade, or 3rd grade, and she also was a diagnostician. She's currently pursuing a doctorate. She has only one more course, and then she'll be ABD and just have that great dissertation to write. We're very fortunate to have her in our district, in our division. And she works with Dr. Hastings, and she's still standing after she... No, just kidding, Dr. Hastings. We love to tease Dr. Hastings. Cory, please share with us about STAR.
Thank you, Dr. Mayor. Thank you, Dr. Burns, Ms. Klein, members of the board, for allowing me this opportunity to give you a STAR update. STAR is our new assessment program, the State of Texas Assessments of Academic Readiness. And when we say STAR, we're referring to the STAR test, a STAR test in Spanish, a STAR-L, which is a linguistically modified test for our English language learners, the STAR Modified, and the STAR Alternate, which are tests that some of our special education students may be eligible to take. We still have TACs on here because our 10th and 11th graders are still living under TACs this year, and next year it will only be our 11th graders. For 3 through 8, the tests and subjects are the same. They don't see much difference. They have a new name, but the subjects that they're responsible for are the same. High school is where we come into our big changes. We now have 12 end-of-course assessments, but it's really 15 because English has a reading test and a writing test for each English end-of-course. So it's really 15 end-of-course assessments. STAR will provide a more clearly articulated assessment program. The state says that they're gonna provide us more assessment information from test blueprints to testing manuals, but we won't see a released test to know what an actual test fully looks like until at least 2014. The STAR program will also focus on fewer skills, and it will address skills in a deeper manner. So that focus on fewer, we've talked about this once before, but 30 to 40% of the eligible texts or the standards that the students are to know make up 60 to 65% of the assessment, while the supporting standards make up 60 to 70% of the eligible texts, but only 35 to 40% of the test. And a readiness standard is a standard that is essential for the next grade level. It's important, they have to have that skill down strongly so that they can succeed in the next level. And a supporting is just as important because you can't have your readiness standards at a level if you don't know your supporting, but their information that may be tested in another year or tested in a previous year, but they support those readiness standards. And so when you look at it pictorially, you can see how much more of the test is at that readiness level than at the supporting level. When we talk about a deeper manner, the questions are at a higher cognitive complexity that match the teacs that the students are expected to know. The students no longer just have to read a passage, and the answer is in that passage, and right there, they can get that answer. They now have to read that passage, look at the questions, and then, it's not just basic recall. They have to take information they know, analyze, and really apply that information to answer a question. And the same with math and science. It's not just put numbers in, solve a problem. I have to know how to do that problem, and then be able to then say, okay, how does this apply? So it's a much more complex level. They look at those critical thinking skills. Like I said, you have to read across genres and compare a personal narrative to a poem and how those points match. And so that's something that our students haven't had to do in the past. Writing, there's two essays required for 4th and 7th, and they previously only had one essay. And the processing skills, or we always call it problem solving, is now intertwined in every area rather than having a section of just problem solving. And there's a greater number of those open-ended questions, so the students can't have a 1 out of 4 chance of getting the answer right. They have to be able to solve the problem and then grid their answer. So I gave you an example of that deeper manner. This is a released exit-level science. It is at an IPC level standard. And so for this question, I just need to know, using my formula chart that the state gives me, how do I calculate work? Well, work is force times distance. So I just take that formula I know, apply the appropriate numbers, and then I solve. But when I get to physics, which is a similar concept, I have to know the formula for work. I have to know the formula for gravitational potential energy. And I have to look at three places on my science chart to be able to have those formulas as background knowledge. But I don't really need to solve this problem. I have to know those problems, I have to know how they work, so that then I can read what this is asking me and see, based on my knowledge of those formulas, what is happening here. So you can see that a typical 11th grader went from needing to know this about work to having to know multiple ways. And this is a supporting standard. So this isn't one of those readiness standards that's at a higher level. This is a supporting standard question. Then, a typical 11th grader is in Algebra II, but on their exit-level test, this would be the extent that they would see for a quadratic function. And this is your slope-intercept formula. And all I have to know is, to translate it up 15 units, I just need to add 15 to that 31 for my intercept. It's a very basic formula level. But when I'm in Algebra II, I have to look at this graph. I have to be able to figure out the equation of this graph, then look at the question and say, okay, I need to translate it over 5, you know, down 4, do that, and then say, now what would that equation look like? So I'm having to do a lot more with the information I have in my head. So, I'm having to do a lot more with the information I have in my head and that I have on the paper, so that I can be successful. And this, again, is a basic quadratic function for Algebra II. It's a supporting standard. When students receive their score reports, they're going to have performance standards. And the state material starting to refer to a Level 1, Level 2, and Level 3. There's going to be a score that says you're at satisfactory level, and there'll be a score that says you're at advanced, which gives you three performances of unsatisfactory, satisfactory, and advanced. So, when our students see this, we, you'll hear the three levels, but there's two cut points that make up those levels. For Level 3, that advanced academic performance on Algebra II and English 3 says that I have met that college-ready standard. So, if I score that on these two tests, then if I go to a state school, I do not have to take remediated classes in English or Algebra. And they're going to do research to have that same level for Science and Social Studies. Now, when we talk about the reports, our first reports for STAR, the students are going to take those, they took some last month, they're going to take the rest in May for EOC, and they will know their scores before they leave for summer. And we'll get the official scores in June. And the retest for that first time will be in July. Now, for 3 through 8 assessments, the standards are going to be set October, sometimes they say fall, sometimes they say October, so some point there. But we will only get raw score information this June, and we won't know the performance standards, that satisfactory or advanced level, until January 2013. So, who has to take the EOC? Any student, our first-time freshmen have to take the EOC if they're in a course that has an EOC for it. But if a student is in a grade lower than 9th, say an 8th grader taking Algebra, they're required to take the EOC as well. And if a student is receiving credit any manner, the correspondence, dual credit, they still have to take that EOC if they're going to get high school credit for it. And it doesn't matter what graduation plan you're on, you still will take your EOCs for the classes you have course credit for. And then we, and for EOCs, we also have the cumulative score, which Dr. Mayer talked about when we talked about that 15%. So, students have 12 exams, they have to get a minimum on, but then they also have to get a certain cumulative score. So, let's look at this example. We've got English 3. If satisfactory is at 1,000, 3,000 is my cumulative score, and my minimum score that I could get would be 900. So, looking at these scores here of a 1,200, a 800, and 1,100, my cumulative is only 2,300 because that 800 cannot be counted because it doesn't meet minimum score. And then, you could have a student who scored a 900, a 900, and a 900 on each test. They met minimum score on all tests, but their cumulative is only 2,700. So, they're going to have to retake one or more tests to get to that magic 3,000 cumulative. And this is all examples because we are not sure if it will be at a 900, 1,000 level, but it would still be the same formula. So, if a student is on the Distinguished Achievement Program Diploma Plan, they have to reach that Level 3 of Advanced Academic Readiness for English 2, excuse me, English 3 and Algebra II. And to be on that recommended, you have to be at the satisfactory level. So, you couldn't score minimum on either one of these if you're on a recommended plan or a distinguished plan. And so, when we talk about testing, 3 through 8 are now on STAR. Grade 9 is on STAR, but we see that the higher grades have TACs, and that will phase out as the freshmen go through. And we, at the end there where you see STAR or TAC, the TAC is only applicable to students who are retesting to meet their graduation requirement. So, we will still have TACs around with us for a few more years, but we will see less and less of it. We've already had busy testing season. We've had exit-level retest, we've had TACs, the ELA test for 10th and 11th exit level, we've had Telpass, we've had STAR writing for 4th and 7th, math and reading for 5th and 8th, and English 1 EOC. So, we have already had a really busy week last week. And in April, we have more to come. We have TACs exit-level retest again. We have our math, science, social studies, and TACs for grades 10, 11. We have STAR, 3 through 8, so all the subjects that you didn't see above, so 3rd grades math and reading, 4th grades math and reading, all that. And then in May, we will have our STAR EOC. So, we've had a lot, but we still have a lot more to come. So, it's no longer just a week, it's kind of a season now. There were some changes to testing this year. There are no longer exemptions for recent immigrants under STAR. All students, whether you came to the country the day before the test or after you're taking the STAR test. And there's a four-hour time limit that the test is to be done in. Writing, like I said earlier, they have two compositions in 4th and 7th, and English EOCs are two tests, reading and writing. And if a student doesn't do well on one, they only have to take the one they don't do well on, they don't have to retake both. For accountability, this year, we're not going to have state AIS ratings. The state will release the summary data in 2013, so we'll be able to report to you what percentage of our students were at the satisfactory level and what were at the advanced, but we will not have a rating. We will have AYP ratings based on a bridging study. And what that means is that they took the level of met standard on TACs and equated it to what it would be on STAR. And so, if the students score at that level, then they would count as met standard for the AYP ratings. And that's for this year only while we transition. After this year, it will become STAR tests that our AYP is accountable for. And so, they, they said they used empirical analysis to map the TACs met standard to the 2012 assessments in STAR. And we will have an AY, API, excuse me, ranking through ERG once the state releases their data in January of 2013. And that's all I have for you tonight. Do you have any questions?
Could I just say something positive because this is such doom and gloom? My granddaughter is a 9th grader at Turner, and when I picked her up from softball practice the other day, the first thing she said when she got in the car was, "I took the STAR today and it was so easy." And, of course, that scared me right off the bat. Easy is scary. But she did say that, and the reason I, it was easy is because I was so well-prepared. Our teach, our instructors prepared us so well. And my first thought was that when she gets in the car, she talks so much about, you know, what she's learned in science and English and so on. And this critical thinking part is such a major part. I have no idea what she's talking about when she talks to me about all her science learning, but it's all relegated to critical thinking types of conversation, and she totally understands what she's saying. I have no clue what she's saying, but she has total understanding of what she's saying.
This is a big change for our freshmen, but there is a positive change in a way because they're now tested only over the courses they're in, rather than taking a grade-level assessment that may have material that they hadn't had for a few years that we had in TACs. So, while it is a big change for them, it is over that material that they have just had. So, that is a positive.
Could you go over again? You were saying for the high school kids, they're 12 tests, but it's really 15. And I kind of missed, I know it's English that has like two, but I wasn't sure.
Correct.
You then said there were only two essays done, and that was in 4th and 7th, so it's not writing then, or?
Well, they do, they do have writing, but 4th and 7th is just a writing test. And English did break it apart into writing, so they have their essays there. But the two, the change really for writing that the students are seeing is in 4th and 7th where they're now, wait, I have two, you know, rather than a two-page essay, they're writing two one-page essays. And in English, they have 26 lines for their essays because it's all about the quality and their point trying to get across and not about quantity. And for their short answers, they have 10 lines to get that done.
What about grammar and spelling? Is that also taken into consideration in their essays?
Not to the extent that you would think. It's about, if the spelling does not detract from the reading, reader being able to know what they're trying to make. It's really about the point they're trying to get across, rather than, they don't nitpick on capitalizations and grammar.
So, the content is really more important?
Correct.
Board, are there any other questions or comments? Mr. Goot?
Just a quick question. When I look at the high school, and then I consider that we have so many academies throughout our school district, I'm trying to try to understand or correlate my own mind if there's, if that's a benefit or if it's a negative. Because when I look at some of the courses, I'm trying to understand how everything maps. And so, I'm just curious, what is the impact when we look at STAR based upon the fact we have so many academies?
They're still, even if they're in an academy, they're still covering the same state standards. And so, while we may have students at Turner who are freshmen and in physics, they'll take that physics STAR, but it does, they're still learning that material at the same level that a student in a different grade level would learn it. So, I don't think that it negatively impacts the students because, just because you're in an academy, we don't change your state standards that you're responsible for. And so, if anything, it probably helps them being in an academy because they're more excited about being in school because they're able to pursue the things they like better.
Well, what I was specifically thinking about, when we look at an academy, let me take Metza for example, and I look at some of the courses. I guess the question is, do the teachers present the material differently, say in math or science in the Metza Academy than they would if they were in A-Mad or BAW-Med?
Well, I would have to turn that over to Dr. Mayer because I am not familiar with the exact instruction in Metza.
I think they're, they do present the material differently. You know, as you know, there's project-based learning in Metza, but what we know is they still are, like Cory says, teaching the state standards. They're teaching them deeply, they're teaching them well, and students perform well on the state test as a result of that. In fact, there's a lot of pedagogy that they use in Metza that we've recently had a meeting to talk about using in other, other courses in other places.
Good.
Are there any other comments or questions? Or if not, thank you, and we hope you are successful in completing your PhD.
Thank you. Me too.
Dr. Burns, item 2B, Public Certification of Internet Safety Training.
Yes, Ms. Klein, members of the board, there are many things that, that public schools are called upon to do these days. The list continues to grow. However, we're, we're not afraid to meet the challenge, but it does require extra effort and sometimes extra funding. One of those things is how we address internet safety. And so, tonight, we're bringing to you what we do here in the district to do that. And I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Burning first, and then he's going to turn it over to Ms. Niedabitz, I believe. So, Dr. Burning?
Thank you, Dr. Burns. Good evening. And with me is Cindy Niedabitz, our Coordinator of Library and Media Services. You know, every, every year, we teach internet safety to our children. And this year, it's actually a requirement for us to report to the board that we provide internet safety training to our students. And so, this is where Cindy comes in. Cindy, as I mentioned, is the Coordinator of Library and Media Services. And this year, we had Internet Safety Month, the month of February, and our librarians managed that internet safety and did a great job with the help of instructional technology specialists and obviously the teachers. But you know, the librarians are the information brokers of the past and the future. And our librarians handle everything from magazines and periodicals to online coursework to online internet safety. And so, I'd like to turn it over to Cindy and ask her to give you a brief overview of Internet Safety Month in Carrollton Farmers Branch.
I want to thank Ms. Klein, the board, and Dr. Burns for giving me this time this evening. Last year, we conducted our Internet Safety Month in February. It is in response to the Children's Internet Protection Act, which requires that we have a program such as this. This meeting will actually meet the requirement of a public hearing about our Internet Safety Month. It was led by the CFB librarians. We set out objectives for them to teach, but we did not give them a program that they had to follow. We asked them to meet with their principals, to meet with their counselors, and to design a program that fit their school. So, it looked different in every school, but there were the same objectives they had to meet. At the elementary level, we broke it into really three different objectives. The first one was cyberbullying, and I don't have to tell you how important that is. And that was really a K-12 objective. We talked to students about what they should and shouldn't write on the internet, what they should and shouldn't write to each other. We talked to our students about what do you do if you become the victim? Who do you go to? How do you get help? We also talked about protecting their personal information. The first thing we had to do was teach them what personal information was. They didn't know. They didn't have an idea. But once we talked to them about that, we talked to them about the fact that you don't share that information with other people, and you certainly do not share it online with people you may not know who you're communicating with. That was also a K-12 initiative. Then with elementary, we kind of lumped it together as internet manners, but really, it was teaching them how to use the internet in a responsible manner. How do you do an email? What is the appropriate way to do an email? What's appropriate when you're looking at websites? What do you want to use for research? That kind of puts together a lot of different topics. On secondary, you can see the first two objectives are what I've just said, the cyberbullying and personal information. But then we took it a little further because our secondary has some other concerns that we want to address. One was phone texting and its dangers. We talked about texting and driving. Do you know that is now the number-one cause of accidents with teenagers? We talked to them about what content you can text and what you should not be texting. We talked about the consequences if you text things that were inappropriate. We talked to them about social media. It's a fact of life. They are on social media. But what they need to think about is what they're putting up there that the world can see, that might be looked at by colleges, that might be looked at by employers. We tried to bring that point to them. Copyright laws, really, librarians talk about that all year. Because anytime a class is in doing research, we want them to cite their sources and tell us where they're getting it from. But this went a little bit further. This talked about downloading music, sharing music, the legal part of copyright. And we also talked about personal learning device policies where that's an initiative in the school. We talked about how students can use those, but how to use them responsibly. And that ends my presentation. I want to thank you again for your time. What took me four minutes to say took the librarians a month to do. But I appreciate your time, and if there's any questions, I'm sure either myself or Dr. Burning can answer them.
Board, are there any questions? That was a very clear presentation and glad to hear about what we're doing to address these issues.
Thank you.
This time, we'll move to 2C, a report on 2012-13 preliminary budget. Dr. Burns?
Thank you, Ms. Klein, members of the board. Before I turn it over to Mr. Hyatt, you know, all these things that we do and all the testing and what we know we have to do to meet our goal of high achievement for all students, takes some dollars, takes a budget. And so, we continue to work on that budget to try to find the resources necessary to meet our needs, but it continues to be a challenge, but we feel like we have started to come away with maybe a budget that gets close to the, the board's target. So, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Hyatt now for tonight's presentation. So, Ms. Hyatt?
Thank you, Dr. Burns. As the board's well aware, we've, we've had a work session related to budget, and we've had conversations related to budget in previous meetings. And we're on the trail. We're on the path of coming to a final budget to present to you and for you to consider. In the August board meeting will be your timeframe to actually make a final decision on that. But there's a couple of steps and a couple of ongoing steps in the process. But the most important one right now is to continue to bring you along with the things you've given us directions to do, show you our progress in addressing the directions you've given us, and see where we are in, in the process. So, that when we get to August for a final budget to present to you, it's not going to be new information. You know, this board has been together long enough to realize that, that if we get to August-
August and you aren't aware of what our plannings are and what our budget planning is, it's too late then to make big changes. So, so this is a, an ongoing step in the process to, to keep you informed of the changes we've made to address the direction you've given us. In our budget work session, you gave us some pretty specific directions and pretty specific marching orders as far as the, the things that, that we need to address in this budget. And as Dr. Burns said, we've got a mountain to climb for in school finance in Texas. If anybody's been reading the papers, you know, I think we're up to five lawsuits that have been filed against the state of Texas related to school finance. I understand they'll probably ultimately consolidate them all into one lawsuit, but essentially, all five of them are saying there's not enough money, and even what there is is not being distributed in, in an appropriate method. So, so we're not alone in our, in our problems related to, to school finance and budget. We'll share the, share our problems with about a thousand in some odd other school districts in Texas. I'll remind you, one of the, you know, a couple of, couple of the major points that we came away with from our previous work sessions and conversations was the board gave us a ultimate limit, if you will. I mean, we know that in, in the structure that the state's given us and the reduction in funding that they gave us, even if we could make the reductions that, to meet the limitations in resources the state's gave, the state gave us, to achieve that in one year or even two or three years is probably unrealistic. I mean, the, the state's reduced our funding by over $10 million, and to try to, to try to accommodate that kind of reduction in our expenditures and our, our approach to budget over a one or two-year timeframe is probably unrealistic. For the, for the public's information and the board realizes this, it's our good fortune with, with your help and leadership and some superintendent guidance, we've built some reserves up. We have some money in the bank that we can defer some of that implementation for a period, but we know that there's a, there's a limit to that. So, so your direction to us was to, to use some of those reserves, to continue to make reductions. You gave us a limit to how much reserves we could use. That limit was, was established somewhere between the five and $11 million, depending on the board member. But, but that $11 million was, was kind of a, a majority, if not total consensus. So we realize that's a, there is a hard limit to even, even your patience. So we, we realize that. So what I'm going to ask Ms. Tillman to do tonight is present to you kind of a, an update of where we are with budget, the work we've done, where that puts us in the process, and then ultimately lead you into some major topics. And there are some major elements of our budget work that we believe you need to have active participation in. And we'll talk about those major elements of our work that, that we're asking for active participation in your direction at the end of this process. So Ms. Tanya Tillman's our chief financial officer. Tanya, if you'll lead the board through this process.
Good evening, and thank you for this opportunity to present to the board. I will keep it brief because I'm fairly confident that everybody's not here to, to hear this this evening. I believe they're waiting for some other agenda items. We'll start back from our February board meeting. And if you will recall, at that time, we were looking at a $3.5 million deficit. We have updated that projection, and we now are looking at a $2.2 million loss at the end of this fiscal year. If we take those current expenditures and reduce our revenues by what we know we're going to lose from the state, we would be starting off with a $12.7 million deficit. As we move forward to where we're at today, we have identified approximately $1.7 million worth of operational reductions that we are in the process of finalizing. This would bring us to a $10.9 million deficit at this time.
And Stillman, literally as early as, as late as this morning, we're talking some more that additional reductions, those are the, the operational reductions that you've kind of given us to charge of finding additional costs and additional savings. While they're not final, and while we know there's still a lot of work to do, we believe there's at least another million and a half, maybe as much as $2 million that, that we believe we can, we can find in some operational savings. Some of those things within our operational direction, and some of the things that you'll be working with as far as giving us some specific direction in.
On top of that $1.7?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, sir.
So if we roll forward what we're currently projecting, where we'll end at 2012, and include what we believe would happen for 2013, that would take our fund balance down to $59.7 million. So this would bring us from, if you look at the $70 million at the end of this year, that would be about 131 days of operations. If we were to incur the $10.9 million, that would put us at 110 days of operations. At a prior board meeting, we were requested to bring back some additional information to some specific questions. And at this time, we would like to go over those questions with you very quickly and provide the answers to those questions. The first one being, when was the last raise given to staff? And that was in the 10-11 school year for approximately 2.5%. We were asked if any employee compensation reductions were made by the district. There was none made by the district. However, TRS Active Care did increase their premiums for those individuals who participate in the health insurance program, which did equate to approximately $28 to $94 per month, depending on which plan you are participating in and whether you're covering yourself or your family. Yes, sir?
That amount of money that TRS Active Care adjusted, that would be for any employee of any district who participates in TRS Active Care?
Yes.
So that's not just our employees, but anybody who's in a district that uses that health insurance?
Yes. That, our performance since the last raise has remained from the 10,010 ratings to the 2011 ratings, accountability rating of recognized, and the API ranking of 17. A half a percent raise is estimated to cost approximately $750,000. And if the district were to hold a TRE, a half a cent increase in our maintenance and operation tax rate from a $1.4 to a $1.045 would generate approximately $949,000 in total revenue. We do have four areas that we would like to discuss in depth with the board and provide, get some additional feedback and direction. There are two items up here that we have to take action on this evening. They're on the agenda for further discussion. The first one is the health insurance contribution rate. Due to the timing that's required to do open enrollment, we do have to make a decision on this item this evening so that we can move forward with that process. Also, on our athletic insurance, it is up for discussion later as well. Because of timing, we do have to make some movements in the district to make this happen as well. On the health insurance contribution, this was a part of the work study for the budget, and this just shows you, the second column is the amount that TRS is proposing beginning next fiscal year. We are proposing a $20 reduction in the district's contribution. So the fourth column indicates the total increase in the employees' premium. The last column gives you the number of employees that are currently participating in each plan. So the largest group of employees are in Active Care 1, which would be a total of $33 per month, and $41 per month. And then also Active Care 2 has a large group of employees in it, which would be $46 to $61. Again, this is an agenda item for action.
Right. At this time, we thought we'd just break our major elements up into a little bit of some piecemeal elements and, and ask for feedback from the board at this time. And, and earlier tonight, I was asked a question. It caused me to think deeply, and as, as board questions often do, but the question was, what's the staff's recommendation related to this thing? And, you know, it's an awkward position for us to be in. Because as Dr. Burns and I've talked about several times, there's not a lot of things we do in this district that we don't have some ownership in. I mean, we believe that pretty much everything we do here has value for students, including the amounts we pay for our employees' health because of the value it gives to our employees. We believe that's, that's an important thing to do. Unfortunately, the state's put us in a pretty awkward position of somehow finding a large amount of money to spend less so that we can continue operations. So while, while I would resist strongly recommending to decrease the district's contribution, I also have to owe you an obligation to try to find some ways to reduce our costs. This isn't, this is a tool, this is a mechanism, that literally every employee in the district participates in this problem. Every employee in the district shares on an equal dollar level some of, some of this, some of this problem. I don't really like the solution, but it's one of the possibilities that helps us achieve at least a half a million dollars of our $10 million problem. So that's about as close to a recommendation as you can, as you're going to get from me. But I do feel like, and we feel like it's important, that the board shares in this discussion, gives us some direction. And as Ms. Tillman said, literally is another, is another agenda item after this, we're going to have to make this decision tonight so that our employees can make decisions beginning this month.
Yeah. And Mr. Hyatt, if I could add to that, you know, we've had this discussion even back in August when we were looking at resource allocation and budget. And, you know, these decisions are tough when you, when you lose that kind of revenue and you have to make these kind of hard calls. You know, given the fact that our employees have already taken really a cut in pay because of these increases, it's very difficult to continue to do these things. However, it's, we don't have any options left. As Mr. Hyatt said, we've, we've cut a lot of areas already. We are certainly, with the board's direction last time, considering a compensation. I don't think we can call it a raise anymore because it's not raising their salary. It's, it's an adjustment. And so that is a part of the dialogue tonight as well as this, is that, you know, what's the better of the two for our employees? Well, it's, it's, there's some pros and cons on both sides. However, certainly that discussion, you know, we encourage the board to have as well because we really are looking at that. When you start taking it away, how do you adjust it back? But I would really think it is stretched to call it a raise. I think it's an adjustment, so.
Okay, you just confused.
Mr. Shore?
Yeah, me too.
If we gave a X percent raise, it's not a raise?
Well, technically, it's a raise, but my point is, you're really just breaking even. Raise means you're going up. We're not really going up. We're breaking even on what our employees have had to incur. So it's a semantics, but it's an adjustment more than raise because it's, it's not an increase, it's a break even, or around even, let's say.
Just a minute. I, I think we need to be intellectually honest, okay?
Absolutely.
If TRS decrea, increases their premium, and so an employee participates in that, okay, then their check is going to be smaller
Correct.
Because TRS is taking more. But if their gross pay is increased by any percent, I don't think it's being intellectually honest not to call that a raise. And by the way, I'm not commenting on whether it's warranted or how big or not warranted.
Absolutely.
But, but I think to call that an adjustment isn't being fair to the taxpayers.
Yeah. And I agree with you, Mr. Shore, on that. And I, I think it's just, it may be misleading that there's a raise coming in, in a tough environment.
It may not be
Absolutely.
That they're not advanced in the amount of money they have to discretionary spend.
Yeah, absolutely.
But it's still an increase in their compensation.
Yeah. So maybe the correct thing is explaining what that is versus is the semantics of it. But it is hard to say that it's going to increase their, their take home.
Well, they're not going to be able to take luxury vacations.
Well, and you're also talking about levels when you're talking about percentages because the people at the lower end, the one to fives, are not going to see a bigger compensation as those that are at the other end. But I still have a major problem when we start looking at the employees and we use our employees as a reason for cutting our budget. I just think that there's somewhere else. I'm looking at, you know, we're buying magazines for $36,000, and we've got the standardized test that costs $36,000. And we've got stipends that I think we need to look at. I think there's some other areas that we can look at without always looking at our employees as ways of reducing our budget. I'm sorry, I'm just adamant about that. I've been there, done that, and I know when that paycheck comes and it gets smaller and smaller, and it's not much in the beginning. I'm, I'm just totally against any kind of increase. And I know that TRS is going to probably keep increasing as the years go on. And even at that, their increase is not as, as much as ours. You know, $20 is, when you have, when you look at this employee monthly premium, and the employee only, $96 they're going to take out of that paycheck, which isn't much in the first place, but by the time they took, take out taxes and TRS. And then if you have an employee with a family, it's $608 a month out of a paycheck. And many of these people, I know many of these people are the single wage owners in their home. So whether they're a principal or administrator or a, you know, or a bus, bus driver, it doesn't matter who they are, many of them are single wage owners. And I really think we need to look at this when we start attacking our employees for cuts.
Mr. Shore?
Oh, Richard, yes, we'll have.
So am I correct, we're, we're going to reduce it from 262 to 242 per employee each month?
Yes.
Am I correct?
Yes, sir.
I think there's a, as, as, as far as our budget, I think there's a, a lot of different other areas that we haven't explored yet. I mean, when you start talking about the different business segments, we first need to say that we're in the business of educating kids, so we need to start there. And as it pertains to looking at the budget, so we need, we need to say that if it's not directly, whatever our business segments are, if this is not directly affecting our, in the process of educating kids, then we need to look at, we need to look at outsourcing. A lot of the school districts are doing it. There's a lot of different business segments that we still have that we haven't outsourced yet. And the main reason why, because I think administrations get emotionally attached to, to the business segments that they have. But you look at Houston ISD, they're outsourcing their food to Airmark, which is a whole lot cheaper. Lewisville ISD is outsourcing their facility services, saving them money. And at the same time, there's a lot of different areas that we can do here as well to, to save money. That's, this here, what we're proposing is, that's a little small, I mean, that's small, small potatoes compared to million-dollar savings when we start talking about addressing other business segments. Currently, we outsource transportation to Dallas County schools. So, you know, we need to, we need to really start, I mean, I'd like to inspire administrative team to get a little bit more creative as far as looking at some of these segments. I mean, it's about time. For us to try to take away something from teachers, I say teachers, but it's affecting everyone, but teachers are the main, because there's, there's so many of them. So you start talking about affecting teachers in, in something that's so small and miniscule as opposed to maybe they may get a half percent raise or they may not. But we need to look at these big-ticket items that are going to really savor some dollars, dollars in the, in the short run and the long term. I mean, that's, that's what we ought to be having work study about, is, is drilling down to these different business segments. There's no way that any other, say, for instance, our food service or Costerdo Service, we cannot do it cheaper than another firm, than another professional firm that's in that business, that's their core business. There's no way. I'd do it in my business because it's cheaper for me to do, to hire someone else to do marketing than it would for me to hire somebody to do marketing. I mean, it's just, I mean, it's, it's just the way it is. So if it's not our core business, we have to look at outsourcing it. Because someone else, some other firm that's their core business, they're going to be able to do it cheaper than CFB ISD and better quality. Thank you.
And one more thing I'd like to say is, we've had some criticism, and we're always going to get criticism, that we're administrative heavy, which we definitely are not. Our administrators are carrying such huge umbrellas right now that it amazes me that they can carry as much as they can and, and perform as well as they do. We've had some criticism that we are now going to be We've had some criticism that we are now going to be adding two administrators, one in charge of curriculum for high school and one for elementary. Well, that takes a little bit of a load, a huge load, off of Dr. Mayer, who has been doing all of this, plus her umbrella has gotten larger and larger each year because we have not replaced the administrators that have retired or who have left for some reason or another. Also, our administrators don't get bonuses like most of the CEOs out there on the real world. So, I think we need to all take that into consideration, that they also are being hit and all of these principals out here by this health insurance increase. And I really think we need, we're not just talking about teachers, we're talking about all employees that are included, and so, I really think we need to think about that and impress upon our community and public that, you know, we're not the Enrons of the world.
Mr. Shore?
Richard, I think you make a valid point that we are remiss if we fail to look at anywhere where we can use our dollars better. I'm also mindful of what James said earlier in this meeting about what other trustees say about this district, and it's probably the results of some of the people sitting at this table over there and out there. And certainly, we don't want to take action that would detract from what's going on. I heard Mr. Hyatt say that there's a confidence level of an additional million and a half that we think can be found in savings. Did I hear you accurately?
Yes.
Take your nodding head up and down as yes.
That's a yes.
And by my calculations, if that's the case, then without a tax increase, we have funded a 1% raise. If you look at the screen, where a half percent raise costs about $750,000, if we've got a million and a half savings that we're pretty certain that we can attain, by my math, we've got that 1% raise. Now, I want to be intellectually honest. It may be that million and a half savings may be accomplishing what Mr. Fleming was talking about, or at least a portion of it, earlier. I take it that we have, and this is going to come out as a statement, but I mean it as a question, when we're exploring asking the teachers to pay an additional $20 a month, not the teachers, every employee.
Everybody.
Every employee. The security guard who's out there, okay? The folks who prepare the meals, the custodians, everybody. $20 a month. Have we examined whether we're better off not doing that, not asking them to contribute an additional $20 a month, and then considering either a smaller or no, pardon me, raise? And my supposition is that it's better for the employee to get the increased compensation at the back end. It may be a net currently of no difference.
Yeah.
At the back end, it's better for the employee. The question is, as a district, does it make a difference in the district whether we give the increase in compensation? We hit them up a little bit more for the cost of health insurance, but we try and supplant that, okay? Does the district suffer a hit either way? Or does it make a difference for the district?
Well, Mr. Hyatt's got his calculator out. Mr. Shore, I think you hit on a very critical point here, is that, you know, what is the better for our employees? If we can do one or the other, which is the better to do? And there's some pluses and minuses on each one. In terms of our system in paying in retirement into TRS, certainly the more money they see as income for TRS purposes is better. Now, for income tax purposes, some of that's deferred in the district's contribution because it's not salary. So, there's a little bit of tradeoff on each one, but certainly in the longer, it would be the TRS. But that's kind of my limited knowledge of it, but I'll let Mr. Hyatt give you some more detail to that, so.
And, Mr. Shore, as you, I know you realize this, whether it's financially better or worse for the district, all depends on whether we, what we balance that X percent raise at. So, as a general rule, it can be balanced so that it's a cost-neutral element to the district, but if it were at a half a percent raise, and that's pretty nominal, if it were a half a percent raise, now, the half a percent raise would cost the district more than the district would recoup by reducing its contribution, but it would also be a better financial situation for the employee too, both immediately and in the long run in TRS.
Dr. Burns, a comment you made that segues nicely to my next question. There's about a half a million dollar savings if we disband the longevity pay appropriately.
Yes, sir.
Subjectively, okay, is it worth it to the district economically to disband that versus the presumed goodwill that I think the district receives by having somebody able to participate in that once every five years? And has everybody who's been here at least five years gone through the cycle?
Yeah. Great question. Great question, Mr. Shore. The answer is no. We'd have one more year next year, would everybody would have had an equal chance to receive the five-year.
Then we can't disband it now.
Exactly. And our recommendation would not be to do it now.
That's bad.
I think our recommendation for, and put myself on the line, I've kind of promised the buildings out there that our recommendation would be strongly that we would finish one cycle.
Right. Yeah, that's where horses behind you, you know.
Yeah. So, that's our recommendation. However, the amount it is needs to be considered for future budgets, if not for next year. And so, we have looked at whether or not we want to maybe eliminate the five-year and just go with the 10, because that's a significant investment in the district as well, and that could save some money. So, there's some options there for the board to consider going forward.
Maybe we'll accomplish the goal we're really trying to accomplish.
Absolutely. And that's where we're headed. You know, how do you save some money but at the same time not lose the purpose of that, which is to honor our longtime employees, which I think is great, and I think all our employees will tell you when they go to that service award and they get that voucher, they get the biggest smiles on it you've ever seen, so.
They moved quick that night.
Yeah, absolutely. So, that's where kind of we are in positioning with that, but I think it's Mr. Hyatt's job to point out the accounting piece of that is, you don't save that money next year, and it's going to take us a while to realize some of that, and even with the 1.5 that's in there, you know, our strategy all along is to not have any mandatory layoffs and reductions enforced, and so, we're banking on attrition in the right areas as well to occur that. So, we're not necessarily going to be able to guarantee that we could get all 1.5, but we'll continue to work through our strategic design to, through attrition, so.
One more question for Mr. Hyatt, if I may.
Yes, Mr. Shore.
By my understanding, let's forget about a tax increase for a moment, okay? If we were to give a 1% raise such that we had to dip into the fund balance more than you may be comfortable with because you're an ogre, okay? My understanding is that we're still well above the minimum period of time that you're supposed to have in your fund balance, and you're nodding your head vigorously saying, "Sure, you're right on that one, you got me." Right?
I'm nodding my head that you have a point.
Thank you very much.
Was that vigorously, Mr. Shore?
I think so.
I don't think administration or the board disagrees with very much of what's been said about any of you tonight. None of us really like the reductions. I feel compelled to respond to Mr. Fleming's point about outsourcing. We look at outsourcing, and I don't take pride in it, but I take responsibility for it. I was the guy who brought to the board the outsourcing of our transportation program, and that wasn't easy. Those of us who were around when that happened realize how emotional and difficult it is when you essentially tell a significant portion of your employees, "We don't love you anymore, go away." Essentially, if we outsourced our facilities and operations, we'd take several hundred of our employees and let them go, and they would hopefully get employment with the outsourced company, but that would be, that would be the essential effect of it. We had a significant research project done studying our maintenance and operation program and its costs and relative costs to other districts, and we're not one of the cheapest districts around, but frankly, we're kind of mid-range as far as costs, as far as the operation in that area, but we also identified where our costs are, and where our costs are is that because of the compensation structure this district has in place, which is equivalent across all categories, we do pay our employees a little bit better than the outside market does, and that some of our competitors do. And, you know, the solution, if we want to take it, would simply be we could reduce all their compensation and achieve the same goal as outsourcing, because that would be the outsourced company's solution. This research study we had done identified that we have a staffing pattern equivalent to some of the lower staffing patterns. We just pay a little bit better. So, it's a compensation deal, and that's, to some degree, why we came up with some of these alternatives for you guys to consider. It's tough, and I think Mr. Shore's point is, if we were to reduce the contribution level and offset that with some of the savings with a modest raise or adjustment, you know, that's not necessarily a bad thing. It's our job though, and it's our responsibility to point out to you, this is not going to get any easier next year, and that's, while we not, we're not disagreeing with you of some of the alternatives, we're just making sure that we're all conscious of this long-term not-going-away problem.
If you were to not reduce the benefits, or if you were not going to make any changes that we talked about tonight, would that mean you need to make some layoffs? Would that change?
That wouldn't change next year's strategy, no, ma'am. We continue with what we're doing, and we'll continue that as long as we can with that approach. It would mean that we're going to have to find other places, it may be that there is no raise or adjustment. If we continue the contribution, then that's going to reduce the amount that you may have wanted to consider to give back in a raise, if we continue to provide that contribution on our part. As Mr. Hyatt said, it's a little bit more for the raise than the contribution saves. At the same time, I think Mr. Shore makes your point. For our people, what's the better deal? And these are people that what, that makes our achievement happen, and so, if we can find a way to do something for them that's better and cost us not quite as much, then I think that's certainly worth consideration. And an increase, and an increase does that. I mean, in the long run, that's how they benefit, so.
Mr. Goode?
Mr. Hyatt, looking at what's, or not listening, excuse me, I didn't see it, but I did hear Mr. Fleming say. Based upon what I've heard, and these areas that could be subcontracted out, we really have never taken that very seriously, to look at those areas and just at least run the numbers to understand what that impact is. But I realize this year, that's not really something we could address, because I think we're too close to in the budget cycle already, but it's something we could look at for the subsequent year. And especially when you indicated also that we need to look at and do a comparison between the cost of subcontracting it out and then understanding if the employees we had that are in those fields, would they prefer to be subcontracted out, or would they prefer to have the reduction in salary that would be commensurate with what it would be for subcontract? And we've never really done that, and I think that would be a marvelous study to do and understand where we're at.
Didn't you, maybe a couple of years ago, I asked you if you would check, see the difference between outsourcing our janitorial services as opposed to, and that the outsourcing costs more than our internal?
In comparing our district to some other districts that do have some outsourced services, there's not a significant savings. And I'll make copies, it's a pretty extensive report.
In general, across the state and anywhere, federal government outsources, state government outsources, there is no way that we could do it any cheaper for, as far as, just say, janitorial, than any other company, and when that's their core competency. There's just no way. I mean, if it is, I mean, generally, overall speaking, there's just no way that any, if that's their core business, there's no way that we can compete and do it for any less.
And what I will point out is, for the board, in June this year, we'll meet and determine what our work studies will be next year, and we can prioritize this as something we want to look at early in the year and compare and judge and evaluate. So, that is an opportunity that we have to direct the staff to look at.
I think future meetings, we just need to probably just look at the, look at the numbers, because if the dollars is making sense, then.
Right. Mr. Shore, did you have your hand raised?
I did. I want to share one additional comment regarding outsourcing. As part of leadership has-be that I'm participating in this year, we went to a district just outside of Corpus Christi, about 5,200 students, and their slogan that they live by is, "Every student deserves my best." It's written on the buses. It's written in classrooms. Everybody who works in that district lives by the slogan, "Every student deserves my best." I am not contending that somebody who works for a contractor who's hired by the district would not perform up to that level. I am wondering, and that's all I'm doing right now, is if we outsourced a service, whether the employee for that contractor would take that slogan and live their life by it, as I believe the vast majority of our staff does live their life by it. And so, that's something that I would want to consider. I certainly think that there's not anything that doesn't deserve to be examined as to, hey, is there a way we can save money to be able to pay more money to the folks who work for us?
May I make the statement that I think oftentimes when that does happen in a school district or the government, that outsourcing company normally takes on the employees, but the pay is normally less than what they would get paid at the regular organization, but...
And the benefits.
That is, yeah, and the benefits. You know, the reason why it would be cheaper for us, because you don't have the payroll, you don't have the benefits, you don't have that overall salary and that overhead. That's one of the main reasons why it would be cheaper for us to outsource in general.
And I think these are something that I think it sounds like we'd like to make as a priority for next year's work studies. Our kind of four areas of discussion were to adjust the health insurance contribution, which is an upcoming item, eliminate longevity pay, which we kind of had some discussion on that and gave some feedback, eliminate student athletic insurance, which is another item, and then the addition of the 1% raise. Board members, are there any further comments at this time?
How much are the medical bills for the young man from Turner who was paralyzed?
Mr. Hyatt, do you remember, but we would still have the catastrophic piece that would have covered him.
We're not proposing to eliminate the catastrophic coverage.
We're covering the general.
That's a coverage that kicks in after $25,000, so that if anyone had such a catastrophic injury, like the young man you're referring to, there would still be that extreme coverages. This coverage that we're talking about, most of the time, the great majority of the time, is to some degree what I call a bridge coverage. Most families have some sort of medical coverage in their families, but there still are the out-of-pockets, the deductibles, and the miscellaneous costs that aren't covered, and this coverage that we're talking about through athletic insurance covers those type things, to kind of bridge those miscellaneous costs otherwise. For those families who have no coverage, this does provide a modest coverage to at least give them some benefit of those first-dollar coverages. This isn't intended, in no way is... This isn't intended, this, in no ways intended to be the primary health coverage of the family, but it does give them a little help if they have a student that's injured while participating in one of our sports. This is kind of a new topic.
$1,000?
Excuse me?
Uh, sorry.
That's approximately $100,000. I think we included in some information in your packet, the other section. It's not a standard-type of benefit that, that are provided to students. It's a unique element of the law that even allows us to buy this kind of coverage. And I wouldn't say it was 50/50, but there are a significant number of districts like us that don't provide it, and there are a significant number that do, so.
How many students would you say participate in activities in this policy?
Ms. Truitt, do you have, Ms. Janet Truitt's our benefits coordinator, probably would be the best person to answer that. Janet, give the mic.
We also have the claims history for the last three years on the athletic insurance that we're discussing, and it's ranged from 70,000 to 90,000 with a little over 100 claims per year.
I ask, the athletic department gave a projection of the number of students that participate in the sports, and it's sort of hard to get a total number, because you might have a student that participates in baseball and football. And I have the breakdown. I don't have the total, but I can go get that. When we get to that item, I can tell you, you know what the total is.
Just a guesstimate number, Janet?
Oh, high school football, there's 665. Varsity, high school basketball, 215. Golf, 85. Tennis, track, are all about 150. Wrestling, 180. Soccer, 220. Softball, 130. Baseball, 145. So it's.
2,000 kids.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But again, some of those can participate in multiple sports, so they couldn't give me, weren't able to give me an exact number.
Are they all automatically covered by this insurance?
Right now, if they participate in a, in a UIL sport, they are covered. It's a $25,000 excess policy, so it pays after the primary coverage, and.
No fee to them?
No fee to them. The district provides it.
And that's, that's what we're suggesting as an alternative, is to go to what is somewhat common, is that we would provide the same type coverage, but it would be at a fee to the, to the student, and an optional coverage for the student.
And that is our upcoming item 3E.
And that's just a discussion. We, we don't have to make that as a final decision tonight, but because of timing, if we don't decide that item tonight, our benefits department will actually have to go out for proposals next week to, to at least solicit that alternative coverage. We can wait until that alternative coverage comes in to make the final decision, but, but if we don't make that decision tonight, that will trigger an event for them.
The last item we had that we spoke about already is a potential pay raise or adjustment in obtaining feedback in this area. We did provide the last three years of raise history, just for your information.
Weren't we, weren't we below the midpoint that historical data starts?
Uh.
In terms of the neighboring districts?
Of the neighboring districts, yeah. For 10-11, I would say we're, you know, we were probably right at it, yeah, at 2.5.
In '08 and '09, I think we were below the midpoint.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. And, and Mr. Shore, you brought up a good point several times about the performance of the district. And so in terms of what our employees have been doing, you certainly have to commend them for continuing to raise achievement in the fact that, that we haven't necessarily raised compensation and, and have barely kind of met the cost of living index here the last few years.
Can I say something in relation to the pay, though? I think a teacher coming out of college is more interested in where she gets hired, or he gets hired, than the pay. I know many people that would die to, to teach in our district, and they're not even asking me about the pay. They're asking, "How do I get into CFP?" So I think we, you know, I don't think we should be looking at all these other districts in relation to competition as far as pay raise. I just think that, you know, we still get a tremendous number of employees or applicants every year who are high-quality. When I went to the job fair two years ago, those principals were overwhelmed with the numbers of applicants they were getting. And I had one, one of the principals said, "And nobody even asked me about pay." So I think that's something we need to think about and not really concentrate on who's doing what and, and how much.
And I think one item that we did discuss in our work study was the impact on a teacher that does have experience. And then the new teachers are being brought in at the exact same level, and how to work, you know, what the staff can do for that morale issue, and, you know, the experience that that teacher has versus the brand-new one, and.
That concludes the information.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Tillman.
Thank you.
At this time, we'll move to agenda item 3, Board Operations. 3A is audience for guests. Ms. Scrivener, are there any requests to speak?
No, ma'am, there are none.
3B-2 is the consent agenda. The consent agenda is a mechanism that the board uses to approve a number of routine items together with a single vote. These items are routine in nature, and the board has had ample information advanced about these items. Tonight, our consent agenda items are 3B-1, Teacher Contrax; 3B-2, Consider Outstate Travel Requests for Newman Smith DECA Students to Travel to Salt Lake City, Utah, April 28th to May 2nd, 2012, to Attend a DECA International Career and Development Competition; 3B-3, Consider Outstate Travel Requests for Creekview DECA Students to Travel to Salt Lake City, Utah, April 28th to May 2nd, 2012, to Attend a DECA International Career and Development Competition; 3B-4, Consider Outstate Travel Requests for R.L. Turner DECA Students to Travel to Salt Lake City, Utah, April 28th to May 2nd, 2012, to Attend the DECA International Career and Development Competition; 3B-5, Consider Outstate Travel Requests for Barbara Bush Middle School Top Notch Step Team to Travel to Atlanta, Georgia, April 27th to 29th, 2012, to Participate in the National Step Team Association National Step Competition; 3B-6, Consider Accepting Financial Report for January 2012; 3B-7, Consider All Matters Related to the Annual Tax Increment Finance Payments to the City of Farmers Branch Tax Increment Finance District Number 1; City of Farmers Branch Tax Increment Finance District Number 2; and the City of Irving Tax Increment Finance District Number 1; 3B-8, Consider Resolution Authorizing Certain Investment Broker Dealers; 3B-9, Consider Authorization of Administration to Proceed with Proposed Bond Sale; 3B-10, Consider All Matters Related to District Contribution for Health Insurance Plans for 2012, 2013, Effective September 1st, 2012; 3B-11, Consider RFP Number 12-02-161-0 for Asbestos Abatement for Good Elementary School; 3B-12, Consider CSP Number 12-03-011-0 Roof and HVAC Replacement; 3B-13, Consider RFP Number 12-02-011-3 for Voluntary Cancer and Specified Disease Plan; 3B-14, Consider RFP Number 12-03-081-2 for Student Nutrition Ice Cream; 3B-15, Consider RFP Number 12-02-142-2 for Fire Protection and Security; 3B-16, Consider Approval of Purchase of Bane Uniforms for Ranchview High School; 3B-17, Consider Approval of Purchase of Classroom and Administrative Furniture for Good Elementary; 3B-18, Consider Selection of Audit Firm for Fiscal Years 2012 through 2014; 3B-19, Consider Exercising the Extension Option of RFP Number 10-04-012-2 for Library Periodicals; 3B-20, Consider Exercising the Extension Option of RFP Number 09-03-091-0 for Employee Benefits Consultant; 3B-21, Consider Exercising the Extension Option of RFP Number 10-03-042-2 for Grounds Supplies and Equipment; 3B-22, Consider Declaring Furniture Audio-Visual Equipment and Technology Equipment Surplus and Authorizing Them for Disposal; 3B-23, Consider Declaring Vehicle 154 Surplus and Authorizing It for Disposal; 3B-24, Minutes of Work Study Meeting Held on March 1st, 2012; 3B-25, Minutes of Regular Board Meeting Held March 1st, 2012; 3B-3, okay, that's it. So, board members, does anyone wish to pull any items from the consent agenda for further discussion? Mr. Shore?
I wish that we pull item 3B-10. And Mr. Hyatt's supposed to be willing to pull 3B-9.
Yes, sir.
Ms. Swatten?
I would like to pull B, or 3B-19.
Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda items remaining?
Hold on one second.
Yes.
Okay, gotcha. Sorry.
Mr. Shore?
We approve the consent agenda as amended.
Thank you. Is there a second? Thank you, Mr. Goode. All those in favor? All those opposed? That is unanimous.
Which ones are you?
3B-9, Mr. Hyatt?
Thank you, Ms. Klein. Well, Ms. Tillman and Mr. Hibbs, I'd like to come to the mic. I believe the board is well-briefed on this, and this is actually somewhat old information, because we've been planning on this since 2003. I mean, that, that goes way back. But the projects that we're proposing to enter into now, for the most part, were included in that original bond planning process that we did way back in 2003. We had a long-range plan for the projects we were going to do. There's one minor exception, and Mr. Hibbs will point it out, but what we're going to bring to you tonight is a suggested construction program for the coming year. As you know, we've skipped the last couple of years trying to delay some of these projects, but we believe the time has come to consider them. That's, Mr. Hibbs and Ms. Tillman to kind of do a dual presentation tonight. Mr. Hibbs will talk to you about the, the actual physical needs that we're expressing and the relationship to the original bond program, and then Ms. Tillman will talk to you about the financial impacts. Mr. Hibbs?
Thank you, Dr. Burns, Ms. Klein. Thank you for having us tonight. It's been a while since we've been up here, so it's good to talk to you about our, our bond program and our construction program. Here again, our supporting objectives always remain the same. No matter which style of house we're on, we always have the same supporting objectives. Busy slide here, but basically what this is, this is our original schedule from 2003. Basically, the information contained on this one shows that we had a bond sale scheduled for 2004 through 2009. As you can tell, we've exceeded that time. We've been frugal with our, with our money and our bond sales. So even though we're now in 2012, we have not issued or sold near as many bonds as per our original schedule. The items that are, are highlighted there, those are the items that are remaining from the original 2003 identified projects. Those are the projects that we'll talk about here in a minute, some that we want to go ahead and try to pick up at this time. But as you can tell, we have completed a bulk of the projects. We still have a significant amount of our, our funds remaining, so we'll want to try to talk to you now about trying to issue some of that money and try to move forward with what we might want to do in the next year or so.
There have been five actual sales related to the 2003 election, with the last one occurring in 2008, which leaves unissued 70.8 million at this point in time.
And currently, from the projects that we would like to talk about at this time, we've been looking for a while at, at several projects. Bush Middle School and Pope Middle School were slated for additions in the original 2003 bond sale. We'd like to talk about issuing funds to proceed with those projects at this time. Ranchview High School is also a building that has been slated for additions. That's why it's kind of highlighted in yellow. We don't want to pull it off the table, but we do want to kind of hold it this time. We want to keep it in sight, but we are asking to not fund that project at this time. From the original programming that we did, we had some additions slated for River Chase and McCamey and Landry and those. Current demographics show that those may not be ready at this time for additions. I am showing some monies remaining in those projects for, for some future work, that I want to just make sure that we don't forget about those. But kind of the biggie and something we want to talk about tonight is Lost Colinas Elementary. That is a project that was not slated during the 2003 bond issue. We would like to look at it now. Due to the, that building and the cost now for upkeep and maintaining that building, we would like to add it to our list and, and consider funding that project and building a replacement school on that site, very similar to what we're doing at Good or what we did at Thompson, Stark, and some of the other buildings we've done in district. So that would bring us to a $25 million sale and still leave us with a considerable amount of money in, in our bond program for, for other needs. So Ms. Tillman will then tell us how we might fund those.
Due to the favorable market conditions right now, we are proposing that we combine a $25 million new issue along with an advanced refunding up to $39 million. First Southwest, our financial advisors have provided us with an estimate based upon the market conditions. The new issue would cost approximately $35 million, with the refunding saving 1.9 million. In terms of the tax rate impact, looking back six years, you can see where the rate has been. With this current issue, we would be able to stay below where our current rate is at at this time due to our debt structure, the way it's structured right now currently with declines in the, in the yearly requirements. We would like to propose a parameter bond sale, which the district has utilized in the past. And David Medanich with First Southwest is here this evening, and we would like for him to come up at this time and go over the actual details of a parameter sale.
Thank you very much. As you said, you've, you've done a parameters resolution before. In essence, what it does, you will sell, you adopt an order authorizing the issuance of the bonds. And within that order, it gives specific parameters. It gives things such as who has the authority to act on the parameters if you reach them. It gives you amount of like, what the maximum interest rate is on the bonds, a minimum savings, maximum aggregate, final maturity, expiration date. So by adopting it, it doesn't just give the, give the superintendent, associate superintendent, the authority to affect the transaction. You have to do it within a very specific set of parameters, which I'll, if you'll show me how to do this, I'll do it. But the, the primary reason for it is, is that you meet once or twice a month, or bi-monthly or whatever, and you, you have very specific dates you meet. What this allows you to do, it gives you flexibility. It doesn't mean that we're going to pick the very best day in the market. What it means is we're going to try to avoid a bad day in the market. And so it gives us the flexibility on, as far as the refunding's concerned, and the new money, you know, you may get to the point, you need to sell the new money portion of it, that's 25 million, and the market's just not there to make the refunding work, so you can just take the refunding portion out. And that's what this parameter will show, that you have to stay within that. And for example, the delegated officers would be the superintendent and/or, and probably both, the associate superintendent. The maximum interest rate on the bonds would be 4%. Currently, the rate on the bonds is probably more like 3.25% for it to work. And then again, these are just estimates, and we'll tighten it down a little bit when you finally get to considering the adoption of it. Minimum present value savings is 4.25%. And what you've historically done, and what we also recommend, is you get at least 3% present value savings, because you only get one shot at a lot of these refundings, to do them advanced. The federal, the treasury will only let you do it one time, so you want to get the biggest bang for the buck that you can. We established the maximum principal amount of the bonds, which is the 25 million of voted authorized bonds, as well as are up to the 39 million for the refunding. The maturity dates are exactly as they are right now. There is no extension, there is no restructure. It's just a matter of, as you saw a moment ago, I think it was 108 or 9,000 a year. It's just a matter of reducing the interest rate on the outstanding bonds, replacing it with the lower interest rate on the new bonds. As it then, and then this resolution would expire July 31st if you didn't get within those parameters.
And then this resolution would expire July 31st if you didn't get within those parameters. And I think that's it. Any questions?
The expiration date. Is that giving up time to let this play out?
Yes, sir, it does. Because right now, we're within those parameters, and I believe you're probably, you may consider at the next board meeting, and if you do that, then that would give us plenty of time to do that. And you can also, at any meeting in between now and then, you can consider extending it.
In terms of the timeline, if the board does choose to pursue this option, we would come back at the May 3 meeting and have a parameter bond order for your authorization. That would then start the motion of the calendar, and it would allow us to have pricing in late May, early June, with the actual closing and delivery 30 days after that. So late June, early July.
The action item you have on your board tonight, board, is probably, actually not probably, it actually is not technically required. This is an action that we believe is an important thing, for such a significant action, for staff to proceed with our financial advisor and proceed with the processes to get this significant action done. We believe that you needed to have some advanced knowledge and give us the advanced direction that you agree and endorse this activity. So we're asking you for specific authorization to proceed with the actions and steps required to prepare you to actually issue these bonds. And as Ms. Tillman said, if you give us that direction tonight, we get to work on it, and over the next two months, we can accomplish this. And then probably by the end of the fall, Mr. Hibbs will have some dirt moving around a couple of these projects. I will back up just a little bit on the projects. The two middle schools, for any of you who've been in Ted Polk Middle School this year, you know that that school is just about full. We've probably actually pushed the capacity of that school more than we have any other of our middle schools. It's in need of some expansion, just pure space needs. Barbara Bush is not quite as full, but we all know that that area is still continuing to grow, and the school was originally built at an undersized middle school, and this is just a good opportunity to marry up those two projects and do two middle schools at the same time. The Los Colinas project, for those of you who've been around with us since the beginning, there was a lot of conversation in that bond planning process about Los Colinas Elementary School. But in 2003, we just really were stressed and really resisted tearing down and rebuilding the school that was that new. I mean, it was...
But it had a foot of fall from one end of the school to the other.
But we all recognize that there was some significant foundation issues related to that school, and we were concerned about it. The school has survived another almost 10 years. We've gotten some good value out of it, and so I think we've served our taxpayer as well by putting it off, getting value out of the building. But that foundation has continued to deteriorate. It's still, it's in need of repair. And now, like I said, we've gotten value out of the building. To Mr. Hibbs's credit and your direction and some good fortune, we've had savings on other projects. We've reidentified some projects that we don't have to consider because we didn't have growth in some areas. So we've been able to identify $15 million that we can dedicate to this project and still fund those other remaining projects, and we believe those are adequate funds to set aside for those. The reason we haven't done this previously is we've been trying to make sure we can set aside enough for the potential eventually expanding of Ranchview High School. We believe $40 million. That's significantly more than the original amount set aside, but frankly, since 2003, the costs have gone up. We believe $40 million more than adequately sets aside enough for a future expansion.
I understand, I'm excited about Los Colinas, needless to say, because we've known that school has needed repairs for a long time. I'm concerned about Ranchview in that I know that it doesn't warrant additions right now, but in that bond, wasn't there also a proposal to build a performance hall of some type? Are they not going to do that?
The elements remaining at Ranchview High School are a performance hall, an expansion of the athletic facility, an outdoor practice facility for athletics, and a large second instructional wing, and a band hall. Right now, we've accommodating the band and orchestra in the practice hall and some other spaces. And the answer is either that $40 million encompasses all of that work. We've explored and considered the possibility of separating those out and doing some of those support features without doing the whole thing. It's just not really economical to do that piecemeal, those kinds of works, to come in and do a performance hall, then come back a year later and do a wing, and then come back a year later and do a band hall. The economies, you lose so much of the economies of doing it. So while we recognize there is a need for some of those, we just feel like it's not cost-effective to go ahead and do that piecemeal.
But I would think, I mean, they have such an amazing fine arts department, especially their musical programs, and I would think that they would, that the performance hall would be something that they could use immediately, and you know, the rest of the items that are on the bond would, could come as they're needed. But I have been to quite a few of their performances, and having to perform in the cafeteria is, you know, it's very, it's very uncomfortable for them, and I really think they deserve to have some kind of a performance hall for their wonderful performances.
We could, that would be another element that we could consider as either a piece of or either future board meeting or work session, but we'd like to share with you all of the elements of the pros and cons of doing that kind of partial project.
Board members, that is item 3B-9. Is there any more discussion on that item?
I'd like to see it on the May agenda.
Mr. Hyatt, is that wonderful enough for you?
Let me see if I understand the question. When you say you'd like to see it on the May agenda...
It's too late, isn't it?
Because we really can't take any action right now. It's, it is to consider a parameter bond sale.
What we're asking for you tonight is a voice motion to authorize us to proceed with the proposed bond sale. Next, on the May board meeting, if you give us that authorization to proceed with the steps required, the next step will be to bring you back a parameter order.
I thought I did it a lot quicker.
He'd like to vote.
I guess I'm asking, I guess I'm looking for five other votes.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve 3B-9.
We have a motion. Ms. Watten, second. All those in favor?
Thank you very much. We're really excited about this. I think this is good stuff for our district in a really tough time. This is a real positive thing we can do, and lower the tax rate in the process.
3B-10 and Mr. Shore?
I asked that we pull this item. Not that I believe there's any more discussion to be had on this, although there may be. But I know how I, what I intend to ask this board to do, but I wanted to explain why I'm going to ask that. So I'm, in a moment, I'm going to raise my hand and move that we approve the action that causes the staff to incur an additional $20 a month in paying towards their health care. But my reason for doing that is I'm also hoping that I'll be able to sway a majority of this board that we give staff a 1% raise when that comes along. And I want everybody to understand where I'm coming from with that.
Board members, are there any questions on item 3B-10 or any further discussion?
I understand all I can say.
I'll second that.
Mr. Shore?
I move that we direct the administration to cause the staff to incur an additional $20 of their health care costs. That's my motion.
You just accept number 10?
Yes.
Board members, is there a second? Mr. Goode? Thank you for your second. All those in favor, raise your hands. All those opposed? So, Ms. Scrivener, did you get the vote?
Not quite yet. Could I see opposed again, please?
Thank you, board. We have item 3B-19. Ms. Watten?
Well, it's my same concern that we're spending $36,000 on periodicals for the libraries when so many of our students are using technology for the same kinds of information that they can get out of a magazine that hits, that's half advertising. So I'm just against spending $36,000 for magazines. That's all I can say.
Explain what these periodicals are again. I mean, libraries...
This action, this item is actually an extension of the contract that allows us to get these items cheaper. So we went out on a bid to get these items cheaper. $36,000 is what we would probably spend, what we spent last year. Comes out to about $700 and some dollars per campus in periodicals such as, and I may need Cindy Needabitz up here to give the exact magazines and articles that we use in the libraries and as well as other offices.
Does it include newspapers?
It includes news...would you mind coming up?
What about the weekly reader?
And again, Cindy Needabitz, who is coordinator of libraries, can give us a better idea of exactly what we spend. But this item is for the contract that allows us to get these cheaper. That's what we're voting on this evening.
We still spent $36,000. The question was, does it include newspapers? Sometimes it does. It depends on the newspaper. If we can get the newspaper cheaper by going direct, we can do that. But it does include all periodicals purchased for the district, not just for the library. It just happens to be part of the library bid. And we have libraries as part of our collection in every library.
But what kind of periodicals are we talking about?
Well, it depends. At the elementary level, usually it is periodicals that students like to read. They check them out, and after they're used in the library, they go to classrooms. The same thing with secondary. And sometimes secondary, we purchase by request. I know that at Turner, they get the Journal of Medicine, and that is used in the library for a month, and then it goes right to the medical program. So it depends on which library it is and what they need, what programs they have. Even in the secondaries, it's a checkout system. We let students take these home. It's a way for us to engage our students and try to get them to read. Some of them that might not read a whole book, but they might take a newspaper or a magazine home and enjoy reading it. It's just another tool for literacy.
And, Mr. Hyatt, is this, this is not actually, this item doesn't purchase these materials, it's allowing each campus the opportunity to purchase it at a cheaper rate than, say, what they might get.
And if I may add too, as a general rule, we don't go out to Ms. Warnock or any of the other principals and tell her and her campus specifically, you can't buy this magazine or you have to buy this magazine and do that. And we may make some suggestions, we may give some lists, but we give them some latitude on their campuses between the librarian and the principal, and they decide how they spend their money. To address your concern about reducing costs at your direction, and as we've just got through doing, campuses and departmental staffs were just given the directive that they were going to reduce their supply materials budgets by 5% across the board. You're just, you're just going to have to spend 5% less, but we'll still give them the latitude to make choices with that reduced level of funding, how they want to allocate it. There's a good chance we won't spend as much next year on periodicity as we did last year because frankly, they don't have as much money. So we're just giving you some limitations as a proxy amount we do spend. And I think we hear you loud and clear that in this kind of thing, especially when we can get some electronic media, this is a good place for our campuses to find their savings.
Well, the reason I'm concerned is that it's still $36,000 that we spent last year, and that same incentive was sent to the schools last year to cut. And yet, the year before, it was $36,000, and so I don't see where there's been any savings as in relation to periodicals. And I can see where maybe the medical area, but even with textbooks and periodicals, they're still only getting one opinion, whether they read a periodical where they can go on, online and go in their, through their computers, and they can get as much information or more than they are getting through a periodical, and that's...
And Ms. Watten, I agree with you. I think that's, it's an important point. Unfortunately, a lot of our students still don't have the technology at home to do these things, and...
But they do have in the libraries and they have in their labs.
We do. And I still think it's important to have a paper base, and I'm the technology guy. I'm a big fan of what you're saying, getting it all electronically. It's just, we're still at a point where paper is important, in my opinion, for peer review journals that do give a peer review opinion or a peer review report on items, whereas sometimes in the web, you don't get the peer review journals. They're actually very expensive, even the web-based versions are, so. I think it'll be a balance for another few years before we're completely electronic.
But even, even the newspaper, you know, if they're, if they're purchasing the newspaper, say it's the Dallas Morning News, that's become very expensive because I do take it. But that's even outdated information by the time it's thrown in my front yard, and I can go online and get more updated information than what I'm reading in the newspaper. So, you know, I just, I'm thinking if we're looking at ways to cut, maybe $36,000 doesn't seem like a lot, but it seems to me that it's a lot more important to cut that than to cut a program that's very important to our district and to our students. That's my personal opinion.
Thank you.
Ms. Watten?
Do the periodicals that you subscribe to ever also include the digital?
We have a different contract for that. We do have some periodicals online where they can do research. A lot of these are informational, just for them to read and build background knowledge, really.
But they don't ever come both?
Some of them do.
Where you can get a physical and you can get an online?
Some of them do. Yes, they do. But remember, our students can't, they don't get to check out and take a magazine home if it's digital, but they do in our libraries, in our elementary libraries. The circulation for periodicals is very heavy. And even in our secondaries, they use it, and the teachers in the secondaries take them then to their room. If it's a science magazine, they take them there, or a history magazine, they'll take them. And they'll use them in their rooms after we're finished with them. So they really get dual use, not just the library.
Do we know, I think each year we see a extension of the previous contract. Do we know what was spent last year on periodicals?
$36,000.
I don't know what my particular part of it is.
Because what I think, Ms. Watten, is that $36,000 is what is...
No, that's what Mark said, that was spent last year, and that's why they judge upon how, what the extension is for next year.
Is that right, Rob? That number's pretty close.
And if this item were not approved, Mr. Hyatt, then the alternative, if somebody needed a periodical, would maybe another approach to reducing the money spent on periodicals might be not to eliminate the discounts available through this purchase agreement, but maybe to meter, and I guess what Ms. Watten was saying was that the message that was given last year in, "Let's go more digital," might not have been accomplished as much. But I don't, personally, I don't think it's the time to go totally digital at all ages because we don't have a machine for each kid. You know, I think that there is some benefit still to some paper. But I think what I hear Ms. Watten saying very loud and clear is, is there another way? I think that this contract offers the opportunity for a discounted rate. Is there another means as you direct the campuses on how the message is? You know, but is not a, you know, this item still, I feel, warrants approval to allow that discount version instead of the Dallas Morning News for $27 a month? There's probably a cheaper rate or...
Well, even my second grade granddaughter can get information on her phone faster than she can read a magazine and get, I mean, she can get it more accurate than, and she's done that, so.
And I think Dr. Burns' point was how many children actually have those phones?
A lot.
And, but how many, you know, is that? And that would be an interesting statistic.
Well, and if they don't, they share one another's. I mean, they... I mean, they're, this is definitely a technical world.
My concern is the kid who doesn't have access to the technology is really going to be punished if we don't approve this, so I'm prepared to make a motion.
Let me make a final comment.
Yes, Mr. Gute.
About how you're that close. Once again, we're not directing the actual purchase of anything. We're just giving the opportunity if a campus wanted to purchase. What I see is that we need, if, to accommodate what Ms. Watten is saying, what we need to do is approve this, and then in the budget process, say, on your budget, we want you to reduce your periodical purchases by 5%, but it has nothing to do with approval or, because we're not saying, if we don't approve this, we're not saying you cannot purchase. You can still purchase if you want to. So, therefore, to accommodate what Ms. Watten is saying, we have to address the budget, which is totally separate from what this is.
But what I'm saying is that that was done last year, and it was still spent $36,000.
Nancy, did we give them a directive that they must cut their periodical purchases?
Absolutely. I think every school was given a...
I don't think we did.
An incentive to. And if you've got the money, you're going to spend it. Trust me, as a teacher, if you know you've got it...
Well, I'm inclined to think if we gave them a directive not to do it, and they did it, that's another issue. But my impression is, we did not give them the directive not to purchase...
That is correct.
...periodicals.
Board members, I think we have enough information. Are we ready to make a motion or move forward? Mr. Short?
If I break my living streak, I move that we approve item 3B-19.
Mr. Gute?
I'll second that.
All those in favor? All those opposed? Ms. Scrivener, do you have the vote? At this time, we're moving to item 3C, consider approval of assistant superintendents for elementary and secondary schools. Dr. Burns?
Thank you, Ms. Klein. Members of the Board, I want to thank Ms. Watten's comments earlier because she really provided the context for this very clearly in that, you know, the history of this is that we have, over the last few years, eliminated many executive positions that we haven't replaced. And as we talked about in our work study in February on resource allocation, that we're in a downsizing. We continue to reorganize, restructure, reengineer, however you want to call it, try to meet those needs with fewer people. And so, we have reduced that number. We talked about the 5-2 number, but even more so in the future with the positions it may, through a natural attrition of retirement, that we not replace, and we believe we have a structure to kind of absorb that through these two positions. But first and foremost, the most important thing is keeping achievement high. That's why we do this. And again, I want to thank Mr. Fleming for his comments. The main thing is high achievement for all students. And so, we've got to continue how to do things with less, but better. And so, it's the administration's recommendation that we restructure and make that downsizing move to these two positions with their first priority to be improving achievement, working under the leadership of Dr. Mayer, of course, and myself as well, but primarily working on the achievement piece. But they will be absorbing a lot of other pieces of our operation that we didn't replace, from student services to other areas that we no longer have people in those positions. So, that's why we're recommending these two positions for you tonight. So, having said that, I'd like to present the administration's recommendation for assistant superintendent for elementary schools, and that recommendation is Ms. Tracy Smith. Ms. Smith is here tonight. Ms. Smith, if you stand up, I want to say just a few words about you, all nice. Most of you know Ms. Smith, longtime CFB employee, from teacher to assistant principal to principal. She's a campus leadership, she led campus leaderships at four different campuses for over 14 years, and then recently been as our executive director of school improvement. And that is our recommendation to you tonight for the assistant superintendent job for elementary schools is Ms. Tracy Smith. I'd like to present these separately, so we'll go ahead, Ms. Klein, and let you see if there's a motion for that one, and then we'll present the secondary.
Board, Ms. Watten?
I move that we accept Tracy Smith as the, what is it?
Assistant superintendent.
For elementary schools.
Oh. It's a superintendent?
Assistant superintendent for elementary schools.
Assistant superintendent for elementary schools.
Mr. Gute?
Second.
All those in favor? Congratulations, ladies and gentlemen.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. Before I read the next recommendation, I provide a little bit more context, and, you know, as we continue to try to find ways with less to improve more, part of this rationale for the structure is we look at the districts that are, we perceive as high performance under our system, which is looking at their academic index and NERG, and we're seeing this concentration at an elementary and secondary being vital to providing those services. And so, we've restructured ours in a similar fashion, so that's why we present to you the second piece of that, which is an assistant superintendent for secondary schools. Okay? And that recommendation tonight is Ms. Michelle Bailey. Ms. Bailey, would you stand up, please? Ms. Bailey is currently the principal at Ted Polk Middle School since '06, but she also, previously before that, was an associate principal at Rancho High School, as well as an assistant principal at Crevee High School. So, you can see both of these people have extensive experience in different campuses, as well as teaching in our district as well. So, we are pleased to recommend to you tonight for Ms. Michelle Bailey for assistant superintendent for secondary schools.
Board members? Mr. Gute?
I move that we approve Michelle Bailey as assistant superintendent for secondary schools.
Mr. Short?
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Thank you, Dr. Burns.
You're welcome.
Thank you for bringing these candidates for our approval. At this time, we'll move to item 3D, consider all matters related to a settlement offer in regard to Carrollton Farmers Branch ISD versus SIR Investments, Inc., case number
Ms. Klein, members of the Board, it's somewhat unusual that we bring tax lawsuit cases before you, that usually there's something unique about them. To say that something unique about this case would be an understatement. This has a lot of unique and somewhat confusing elements. We've provided you with some written background, but because of its confusion, I've asked Mr. Bearden, our attorney with Mr. Luna's Law Firm, that is responsible for much of our tax collections, to come explain it briefly to you and propose to you, and then if there's any additional questions or response from the applicant, we'll consider that. So, Mr. Bearden, if you will, do a brief overview and present this to the Board. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Hyatt. Members of the Board, good evening. This is a very unique case. We're looking at a, well, first off, I'm going to speak a little bit, give you a quick overview of what's going on with this particular case, then Mr. Edward Lopez is going to speak to you and basically make his case for his proposal to you all tonight. I collect your taxes, your delinquent property taxes. This is a very unique piece of property. If you can imagine a 20-acre tract in the middle of three or four beautiful housing subdivisions in Denton County, in the city of Carrollton, that is undeveloped. If you go to enter into this about 22-acre tract, it is basically a giant bowl. It goes down probably 30, 40 feet to a creek area. This is an area with scrubby trees. It looks almost like a desert area in some places. You really would expect this to be a UFO landing site. It's a strange piece of land. It's so strange that the developers abandoned it. Whoever developed the area around it just let it go. They didn't care about the value with the appraisal district. As a result, the values were very high for this property. And with high values come high taxes. And very quickly, the amount of taxes due overwhelmed the actual value of this property. So, I've been looking at this property for many years, thinking, what do we do with it? You know, we've got so much in taxes due, but it's just not worth anything. Now, when I say the parcel for CFB, CFB's parcel is only four acres out of this large 22-acre tract. The other entities that collect taxes within that 22-acre tract are the Lewisville ISD, the County of Denton, and the City of Carrollton. So, Carrollton Farmers Branch only had a little four-acre tract down in the southwest part of this parcel. Well, Lewisville ISD and the City of Carrollton and Denton County said, "Let's do something with this. We got to take judgment, even though no one's going to come and bid on this property, let's try to deal with it." And that's what they did. Lewisville ISD, for their parcels, which of course does not include CFB's parcel, because a little tiny four-acre parcel down at the bottom, they went forward with a tax lawsuit with a sale of the property after judgment. There were no bidders, so the property is struck off to the party that requested the order of sale. In this case, it was struck off to the City of Carrollton. Now, because of the nature of this property, the Lewisville ISD basically disclaimed any right, didn't want to have anything to do with it, and by a vote of their board members, voted to just walk away from it, basically, and say, "City of Carrollton, this is your problem. We don't want to be involved in it. If there's EPA problems down there, if there's chemical problems down there, remediation might be needed." They just wanted to be out of it. That was their decision. The City of Carrollton now holds this property and, as is done with property that's been struck off...
Bearden, who owns the property now?
The persons that own the property now are SBWH Development LLC.
Why did you tell the City of Carrollton owns it now?
Well, the City of Carrollton formerly owned it. I was doing it in a piecemeal fashion.
Because do we need this history to be able to address what Mr. Lopez wants done?
I think so. I think so. I'll try to be more brief. The City of Carrollton sold this property after it'd been struck off to it, to Mr. Randall Christman for $125,000.
So, it's been sold?
It has been resold by the city.
There was a buyer?
There was a buyer. There was only one buyer. It was open bids. Anyone in the world could have come and bought it. Mr. Randall Christman paid $125,000. He has since deeded it to SBWH Development, hoping to develop the property. Well, along comes CFB ISD meet with a lawsuit. We have a suit for our taxes. We were not included in that original lawsuit that Lewisville ISD filed for a good reason. We're Carrollton Farmers Branch ISD. You usually don't have Lewisville cases with Carrollton Farmers Branch ISD cases. So, our parcel's sitting there. We've got $23,000 in taxes due, and this was a big surprise to Mr. Christman, to the City of Carrollton, and of course, to SBWH Development. They've made an offer to settle. Offers to settle, we bring to you all when they're of this nature. Sometimes really small, there's times when, in a tax matter, if Carrollton Farmers Branch ISD absolutely cannot receive any money any other way, I speak with the tax assessor-collector, she sometimes speaks with Mr. Hyatt, and sometimes when there's no other chance of getting any monies at all, and an account is in litigation, a settlement is made for very small amounts. Because of the large amount that's due here, this matter is being brought to the Board tonight. It's also a situation where it is a very unique, it's a very unique situation. There's not many pieces of property like this in Carrollton Farmers Branch ISD anymore. We've really cleaned up these things. People have come, they want to develop it. Mr. SBWH Development ostensibly wants to develop this property, get it back on the tax rolls, and make it an income-producing property. Because right now, CFB gets no taxes. It's not making any money in taxes on this property. So, I'd like to turn the floor over to Mr. Lopez and request that you give him your attention and consider his proposal. Thank you.
Good evening, Madam President, Dr. Burns, members of the Board. Mr. Bearden did a wonderful job of giving you a background on this property.
That's debatable.
Okay. If I could, I'll just add a few extra key points, I think, and that is that this property, for the most part, as you've noticed in the package that I've submitted, we had an environmental study done of this property. Of the 22 acres, about three and a half acres of it has wetlands. There were issues about environmental contamination on the property, problems with subsurface and underground surface, I'm sorry, underground stream as well. There was a reason why this property was not developed by the developers. They developed everything around it. If you flew a helicopter over it, you would see all these nice neighborhoods, and then in the middle is this odd-shaped 22 acres. As Dan mentioned, it's basically drainage. It's drainage for all those neighborhoods. So, there's a pump station there, there's a creek that runs through it. A good portion of this property is in a floodplain. So, when the City of Carrollton looked at this property and said, you know, from a tax standpoint, what can we do? And I told them from the very beginning, this property will never get a viable purchaser for the value of the taxes that have accumulated against it. The developer abandoned the property. There was FDIC involvement for many years. There was RTC involvement for many years. There was a bankruptcy involved for many years. And when we got through all of that, we finally got a lawsuit, took the property to sheriff's sale, bid it out to the world, nobody bid on it. When the City of Carrollton took it up for resale, again, it's offered up to the world. Only one purchaser showed up, and that was Mr. Randall Christman, offering $125,000. Normally, when we offer property for resale, my law firm advertises that through a website. We get sometimes anywhere from five calls, 10 calls. A property of this magnitude in Carrollton would normally generate 100 phone calls, probably legitimately 10 to 15 bidders, and this property, because it's a unique situation, only drew one bidder. Just to give you a similar situation, a few years ago, we had a property on Keller Springs that we sold. It was a 12-acre tract of property. I knew it as the name of Myrtle Taylor Davidson because that was the primary defendant. That property generated probably 200 phone calls. We probably got 45 bids on it. The taxes were recovered up to about 95% of the value, and that's kind of indicative to me of property that sells in Carrollton, Carrollton Farmers Branch, Denton County. But because of the unique problems inherent in this property, we had one group, basically, that said, "We think we can do something with it." What they can do with it is marginal, marginal at best. It's going to require a sophisticated developer with financial resources to actually undertake all the things that have to be done to develop some of that property. It is not all developable. Probably somewhere between seven and eight acres of total usage can be developed, and not without a significant amount of buildup out of floodplain, issues with the Corps of Engineers, and some other things. So, what we're asking on behalf of the City of Carrollton and Denton County is that Carrollton Farmers Branch, in essence, ratify the tax resale to Mr. Christman and participate in the resale proceeds just as they would have had they been part of that lawsuit. And if we put your $22,000 in tax dollars into that, into those numbers, we come out with an amount that's roughly about $3,500 of distributable proceeds that would come to the school district. The city has agreed to pay that $3,500. They're not going to go to Mr. Christman and say, "Mr. Christman, you still owe $3,500." And the reason for that is, we feel that when we sold that property at resale to Mr. Christman, we represented to him, as we always do at these tax resales, this satisfies all the tax obligation. When he bid in the $125, he thought he was getting that property free and clear of all the remaining tax claims, only to find out later that, of course, Carrollton Farmers Branch has some taxes owing. So, we're asking you to participate, be treated the same as the City of Carrollton, Denton County, and not have to share in any of the risk or the cost of litigation or the time that it has taken to get this property to this level. I have touched this property for probably at least 15 years, and I have done this type of work for 20 years, and I can tell you that this is, single-handedly, the most complex, difficult, unique case in tax collection that I've ever dealt with. And to say that is, as Mr. Hyatt said, is an understatement even because it really is a mess. And we have right now before us an opportunity to see this property potentially get developed in the future. And if there's ever going to be revenue, we know one thing, and that is, for 20 years, this property has not developed, has not been developed, has not generated any tax... this property has not developed, has not been developed, has not generated any tax revenue. We have a buyer who's ready and willing to do some development, so what we have to look forward to is, prospectively, future tax dollars. And that's what I'm asking you to do. Participate, and let's move forward so that we can get tax dollars in the future. And of course, I'm mindful, as an attorney representing taxing authorities and working in conjunction with your tax lawyers, that these are monies that belong to the district that fund your services. We know these are difficult times, and we likewise take the hit with you. When we come to you and say, "Take this nominal amount," we likewise have taken that same hit as attorneys, because we only get paid on what we collect. And if we exercise our business judgment and believe that this is a good deal for you, which I believe it is, and I believe that it was for the city, the County of Denton likewise agreed, Louisville ISD, as Dan mentioned, said, "We want nothing to do with this property. Just let us out of this mess."
Mr. Lopez, why hasn't this came before the Board until now?
Up until now?
Yeah.
Because after the resale took place in December 2010, it wasn't until, I think, the spring of 2011 that Mr. Christman got the first notices of delinquency from Carrollton Farmers Branch. And the reason he got those was because the tax roll had been changed into his name, and then therefore the notices started going to him. And that's when he said, "Hey Ed, what are these about?" And at that point, I said, "What do you mean Carrollton Farmers Branch has taxes? I had no idea there was even a sliver of this property in Carrollton Farmers Branch."
Sounds familiar.
So we've worked through some, we've worked through some of those issues, and then where we're at now, and that is presenting it to the Board for consideration.
Board members, we have this item also included as a closed item later if we so choose?
I have a plethora of questions.
Okay, Mr. Shore, go for it.
Has anybody from CFB done anything wrong here?
Nope. In my opinion, no.
Why is the City of Carrollton offering $3,300 on a $23,000 obligation? Why is the City of Carrollton any of the money?
Because when we put, when we put the school district's taxes in proportion to the other jurisdictions, it's a prorated distribution, and that prorated distribution of the $125,000,000 that was offered, that's what that $3,500 comes from.
I know where that number comes from.
But why is the city undertaking it?
Yeah.
Because the city feels that, one of the things we do when we do these tax resales, whether it's Carrollton Farmers Branch, Carrollton City, Dallas County, is we have to lure bidders in, and we lure them in by saying, "Yes, you're getting a discounted piece of property, but you're given some assurance that you're getting it free and clear of all the existing tax liens." And this gentleman thought he was getting it free and clear of the tax lien.
How do you know that?
How do I know that he thought? Because we represented that to him. Not in writing, we didn't say we warrant and covenant this, but...
This is a quitclaim deed.
It was.
Okay, Ed, I like you a lot, okay? I told you before this meeting.
Yes, sir.
You're gonna have to work hard to convince me.
I'm trying.
You're not getting there, and I'm not even begun with my questions, okay?
Okay, yes, sir.
Who's the current owner of this property?
It is since, when the city sold it to Mr. Christman, Mr. Christman conveyed it to a development company that I believe he's an owner with, so it's still in the same Christman group.
And Mr. Christman, is this the first piece of real estate he's ever purchased?
No. I don't think so.
Probably a sophisticated purchaser.
Correct. I don't know that personally, but I think he's fairly well-known in the community. This is the first time I ever met him through this situation.
Was there anything that prevented him from knowing that a portion of this property was in CFB?
I wouldn't say there was anything that prevented him from knowing that, but the judgment, the tax judgment that we took in Denton County, for all practical purposes, when a lawsuit's filed like that, it includes all the taxing jurisdictions, and so I...
No, it normally does.
Normally does.
But it didn't here.
That's correct.
But nobody did anything wrong with CFB?
That's correct.
Okay, and so I want to hone in on this.
Right.
There's nothing that CFB did that prevented the purchaser from knowing that a portion of this property was in CFB?
I can't say that that... I agree with you as well, I'm getting it.
Okay, fine. And so what we're being asked to do is to essentially forego the opportunity of collecting $23,000, and merely accept $3,300, because somebody's going to develop the property, and it'll be on the tax rolls and paying money. That's what we're being asked to do.
Well, earlier tonight, when you said, "Ed, you're gonna have to sell me on this," and I quickly just jotted down about seven reasons why this is a good thing to do. And the first one is, we risk losing the only purchaser who made any offer on this property. We know that.
Okay, good, let's stay with that for a second. How much did the purchaser pay for this property?
$125,000.
Now, if we go forward with our lawsuit...
Yes, sir.
More likely than not, we're gonna get a judgment.
You'll get a judgment for your tax dollars, $23,000.
And can't we foreclose on the property?
You'll get a judgment for $23,000. You'll also have a market value of that property of $19,000, so at a prospective tax sale, it'll sell for the lesser of those two, so it'll sell at 19.
Who gets that $19,000?
If at that tax sale, nobody bids, which I suggest no one will, it'll then be struck off to the school district.
Okay, just a second. We know that somebody paid 120 for the 22.
$125,000.
$125,000 for the 22 acres.
Yes, sir.
And so you're telling me that the current owner is gonna let 20% of his property go away for nothing?
I wouldn't say that he would let that go away. I can't really say that.
I don't think he will either.
But I can say that I think, because I've dealt with this property for 15 years, I know that that particular corner is, has an easement, and also has floodplain issues, and I don't think a buyer would come in and say, "That's the three acres, three and a half acres that I want." I really don't see that happening.
We won't know.
I disagree.
If we don't, if we don't push this envelope.
I feel very comfortable in giving my professional opinion to this Board and to the citizens of your district, in telling you that that's not going to happen. And the reason I know that is that for 15 years that I've touched this property, not other than Mr. Christman, no one has ever come forward and say, "We're interested in that property."
I could bring a buyer now for more than $3,300. I can bring a buyer right now. So let's move off of this, okay? If we don't accept your invitation, we get our judgment. We foreclose, okay? Have we lost anything except the $3,300?
Well, I think what would potentially happen is Mr. Christman will withdraw his $125,000 bid. This whole thing will get undone. All the entities will have to essentially refund the money, and then we'll be back to square one with the piece of property that no one wants, in the name of the City of Carrollton, and now the Carrollton Farmers Branch School District has possession of a piece of property that has tremendous risk with it.
Is the contract where the property is sold to Christman?
Mm-hmm.
Are you telling me that's contingent upon this transaction?
It's not contingent. It was a quitclaim deed, but I think, in fairness to the buyer, whether it's in this case or any other tax resale, we want to be able to tell our buyers at tax sales and tax resales, that you're buying it free and clear of all the tax liens.
Then why wasn't there a warranty deed?
That's essential, because we never do warranty deeds. We, none of the entities ever do a warranty deed. Because you don't want to warrant a title to a piece of property that you did not go and get a title policy on, and pay for the title insurance. As an entity, whether...
Was there anything that prevented Christman from getting a title policy?
He wouldn't get a title policy for a couple of reasons. One, before he bought the property, he wasn't in possession, so he wouldn't get a title policy. The second component of that is that most title companies will not issue a title policy on tax-foreclosed properties, for this very reason.
Okay, well, what does a land man do?
Like an oil and gas land man? He goes out and does title research?
Runs the title.
Right.
Is there anything that prevented Christman from running the title and/or seeing which taxing entities this property lies in?
There was nothing to prevent him from doing that, although I will tell you that on our side of the Denton suit, the attorneys representing Louisville ISD, my law firm, and the law firm of McCrory-Vasilka, we all did that work in that case, and the ad litem that was appointed in that case, he likewise did that work. We all represented to that court that this incorporated all the taxes. Everyone missed Carrollton Farmers Branch ISD. So if we missed it as professionals, it's probably unfair to say that a layperson or someone with some level of expertise would have picked that up.
Well, we can debate whether Christman is a layperson or not. Aren't you really asking us to give away the difference between $3,300 and the $23,000 that arguably can be recovered? Aren't you asking us to give that away?
I don't feel that I'm asking you to give that away. I'm asking you to allow a sale to take place...
Sale took place.
...that'll allow this property to be developed, to generate future revenue, where we...
Did the sale already take place?
The sale as to the City of Carrollton, Denton County, and Louisville ISD, yes.
It took place?
Yes.
There's no option that, oh, by the way, if I don't have all the liens cleared up, I get the back out of this deal?
Right. That's normally not the way we do a tax resale. I've never seen that done in a tax resale.
And it wasn't done that way this time?
That's correct.
I'm gonna tell you something. I don't know what the other six are. I figure you gave me your best one first, okay?
Well, I've got, I just wrote them out as I was thinking.
Because I see a lot of folks out there who are probably pissed at me right now for voting to cut 20 bucks from their check each month, okay? And now they're gonna look at me and say, "You're giv..." Because I think I'm giving away, maybe not 23, but I think I'm giving away quite a bit if I accept this invitation.
And I, again, in my professional opinion, I don't feel that the district is giving away money. We are recognizing that this property had very little value for many years. That value was never protested because you had a defunct corporation.
But it's retroactively decreased. The taxable value...
They've got enough to move forward.
It has been decreased, yeah. To be consistent with the value that Denton Cat had on it, Dallas County Appraisal District had it at a much higher value, which in itself presents a huge problem. Because had we, had we had Carrollton Farmers Branch in that lawsuit, we would have had two competing values for that particular tract of property that would have been completely inconsistent with one another, which would have likewise presented a huge problem as well.
It's not fair to keep these other board members from learning. I'm not certain you've sold me.
Can I, can I finish then, just with the points, real quickly?
Can I just ask you a question really quickly?
Yes.
First of all, why did Mr. Christman buy this property?
Why did he?
Yeah.
I have no idea. I'm assuming because he believes he can develop a portion of it, even though he knows he can develop the whole.
According to this, he also, he's already sold it to SBWH.
It's essentially his own business. He just took it out of his personal name.
That's his company?
Yes, ma'am. I believe so. It's, you know, it oftentimes happens when someone fairly sophisticated buys a piece of property in their own name, that they then convey it to an entity that provides them with legal protection should liabilities arise. If I would have bought this property, I would never put it in my personal name. It has way too many problems that create incredible risk for an individual. I would have put it in a corporate name.
Sure, why don't you go ahead and give us the rest of your thing?
Can I ask you to be more specific about the way-too-many problems with incredible risk, because I'd like to list them.
The, you have the environmental study that talks about the problems of development with the wetlands, the problems with the EPA, the migratory birds that are on place, the issues with the Corps of Engineers. We also know that a significant portion of the property is in a floodplain. The creek that runs through the middle of that property, I have aerial pictures that were in color, they didn't quite turn out in your photos, but you can literally see a creek that runs all the way through this thing. If you imagine that creek that overflows from time to time, then you know that you have an area all along the way of the creek that you can't develop. I was told from city staff from many, many years ago, that there's also an underground, for lack of a better word, creek underground, that creates tremendous shifting in some of the soil conditions, which is why these developers never developed that property. The attorney that represented those developers likewise told me the same thing, that the reason they carved around it was because 20 years ago, it was not economically feasible for them to build it up to a level for them to develop it, and they just walked away from it. And by the time things happened, the property gets abandoned, at the appraisal level, you look at 22 acres in Carrollton, and of course, you probably say, "That's worth X amount of dollars." But it's really just never been a viable piece of property.
Well, I would argue that, I think, I would point out that the words about incredible risk have a connotation of something hazardous out there, and what you're describing is really what occurred along the Stemmons Corridor, where levees were built and a lot of successful development occurred. Creeks, streams, and birds are just common, and none of those really represent too many problems with incredible risk, in my view, so, okay.
Well, and all I can really go by is the action that a number of different entities took relative to this property. For example, I know that a financial institution had a lien on this property, they walked away from it. When the property went to the FDIC and the RTC, they walked away from it. And those entities are in charge of taking possession of assets that can perform. I used to represent the FDIC and the RTC.
I think it may be a financial risk, but it's not an environmental risk that poses a hazard. It may be a hazard financially to someone's pocketbook, but it's not a physical risk or a hazard in the field.
Part of the environmental study that was done on this, was done in part because there was a belief that after 20 years of drainage from all those neighborhoods, you were going to have some topsoil issues in terms of contaminants. If you look at that report, you'll also see that there's been debris that have been dumped out there. It's been a dumping ground for 20 years. There's crushed concrete that was out there, and without you really going out there and digging it all up, you really don't know what's buried out there. And I think that's essentially why this has never been developed.
The guy's into it for $125,000. You think he's gonna walk away from it?
Yeah.
I mean, he's into it for $125,000. You think he's gonna walk away? He's gonna offer more than $3,300, I know that.
Okay, Mr. Lopez.
And I'm not, I don't feel that I'm here representing the case for Mr. Christman. I just feel that he came to the sale and made a fair bid, the only bid, and as the attorney representing the City of Carrollton and the other taxing authorities that participated in this judgment, we all felt that that bid was fair. The City and Denton County likewise accepted the bid, knowing all these things. Louisville ISD walked away from this issue altogether, and the City of Carrollton likewise accepted the bid. And we're just trying to facilitate the completion of that, so that something can be done going forward.
I think it should be Mr. Christman standing in front of us, myself.
And so that's why the City of Carrollton is undertaking the obligation of paying this, is the city's gonna come out of its own pockets to pay this difference, and I know you said 33, but it's 3,500 and some change.
Do lawyers have, like, errors and omissions insurance?
Sure.
Like engineers do?
Sure.
Okay, I was just curious. Okay.
We wish we didn't have it.
I'm just curious.
Well, there's, you know, there was no reason to, I won't say there's no reason. There's no error and omission. I mean, Mr. Shore asked if the Farmers Branch did something wrong. They didn't do something wrong, they just were not included in the lawsuit. So now their lien is still out there. We're just trying to figure out a legal mechanism to extinguish that, to protect the sale, to let it go forward, see this property get developed in some shape or form, if it can. And if it can, I'm not real sure why we begrudge this guy for being the one guy in 20 years who's willing to do something with this property. He's taken on all the risks. If he makes a million dollars out of it, so be it. He'll make a million because he put some property on that that's going to generate future dollars for the school district and the other taxing authorities. I do know this, if he walks away from it, we, none of us will ever see any of the tax dollars from it.
Okay. Okay?
I know that for 20 years, we've not seen any tax dollars.
That's a different state.
This company's been in bankruptcy.
That's a different state.
And I know, Mr. Shore, that the effort and the time that I put into this, that the other attorneys have put into it, the City of Carrollton, just by way of background, a few years ago, I think, were approached by TXU, or some entity that needed an easement across this property, and so the City of Carrollton needed to grant this easement. Well, the only way they could grant it was if they took possession of the property. So they began a condemnation proceeding in Denton County to condemn the property using eminent domain. They had an ad litem that was appointed, and the ad litem's fees, by the time they got probably a quarter of the way through the case, had exceeded $30,000. And the City of Carrollton said, "You know what? This is a big mess, and we're just gonna abandon the efforts of eminent..." This is a big mess, and we're just gonna abandon the efforts of eminent domain. And so it's problematic for everybody who has touched it. There is no really good answer to this property. And if I really thought in my heart that this property could generate half a million, I would be cheering for that because we likewise share in that half a million as attorneys. We get a percentage of that. That's our, that's how we get paid. In this case, we're all sharing in the significant loss. And I know no one feels sorry for lawyers in these tough times, but we're no different than anyone else.
Why you're here and not Mr. SBWH, Inc.?
Because.
SBWH LLC.
Because the city of Carrollton conducted the sale, and I was their attorney, and the city has asked me as their attorney to come in and essentially wrap up the last piece of this complicated puzzle. And it was our job to do that.
And if you report back to the city manager, and Matthew, and Jeff Endonian, and all those people, that most of them were courteous, Shore was rude.
I would never say that.
But you report back to them, okay? But I gave it my best shot.
Right.
Good thing.
Won't the city of Carrollton thank you for your efforts?
They'll say, Ed, figure out another fix. And that's my job.
Then let's wait for the next fix.
That's, and you know what? I have created fix, I've created legislative fixes for clients of mine that have problematic properties. I've written legislation, taken it to the legislature, gotten it passed. In every instance that I've ever dealt with, as one of my law professors told me 20 years ago, it's your job to be a dealmaker, not a deal breaker. Make things, make things work. This is one that, there is no way to make it work. This is.
We can disagree with that.
This is, this is the part where I think this is the opportunity for us to close this last, turn the last page of this book, move forward, hopefully see this property get developed. And if I thought there was another way, and especially if I thought there was a way that I could get paid, I would do it. And I just don't see it in this instance.
Keep your eyes open, because I'm gonna show you.
Board, that is item 3D. Is there any more discussion on that item?
Do you have questions?
Ms. Klein, can I ask?
Mr. Hyatt?
You hit Mr. Goode.
I just want some points of clarification. Of the $125,000 that the city of Carrollton sold that property for, how much of that money goes directly to the city? How much goes to Denton County?
Yeah, I believe you said Lewisville ISD just walked away from it. They expect nothing. Is that correct?
Yes, sir. On my, on the letter that I provided Dr. Burns and the board, page two, it gives a distribution, and you could see it was $125,000 that was bid in. There were $39,000 in costs that came off the top. There was $83,000 that was to be distributed. I gave this formula to the city of Carrollton and said, "City of Carrollton, you're supposed to get $14,000. You give Denton $11,000, and then Lewisville was supposed to get 58." Lewisville assigned that interest to the city, so the city should have gotten 58 plus 14, which would have been about $70,000, $72,000. Despite me telling them that's what they were entitled to, they actually pretty much divvied up the money 50/50 between them and Denton. The city didn't feel that they wanted to profit any more than Denton, since Denton chose to take the risk with them, and they kind of divvied up that money. I don't, I don't know if it was 50/50, but it was real close to being 50/50. They actually took less than they should have, the city of Carrollton did.
If I look, the school district owned approximately, I think you said, four acres, about 20, what is that? 25, 50, wait a minute, that is. Out of 22 acres, it was.
About 15%.
20%.
15% or so.
That don't sound like a good deal to me.
However, let's talk about another option. Why don't you just cut out that four acres, let us have it back, and you just sell them the remaining 18?
Well, that, the liens for Denton County and the city have been paid, and they have conveyed their interest in that property to this person. What exists is not the city, the Carrollton Farmers Branch does not own that land, they just have a lien against it. And they only have a lien against a portion of it. The exact description of that portion in terms of acreage is somewhat unknown, because I'm not real sure anyone's ever gone out and surveyed what portion of that it is. I've heard anywhere from four, Dan mentioned three and a half or so. I won't argue with any of those numbers, but it's somewhere along those lines. What essentially Dan would do is he could file a suit for Carrollton's portion of it, taxes, and then you go through the normal tax lawsuit process of filing a lawsuit, trying to recover those dollars, taking it to a tax sale. Mr. Christman's group has paid the taxes that they owed for the 2011 year. They've lived up to their obligation on that. The previous years are all owed by the old entity that's bankrupt and out of business, so it's an in-rim judgment against him. He doesn't have personal liability. The school district would then proceed with that suit, try to take it to a sale, as Mr. Shore suggested. And at a sale, you would try to sell it for the lesser of, the market value or the judgment. So it's $23,000 or $19,500, I think, is the last appraised value of the property.
Actually, to the highest bidder.
If there's people there, two or three people that are bidding against it, sure.
To the highest bidder.
Sure.
We can only get the taxes out of road.
That's right.
But it goes to the highest bidder.
Right. And if there's any excess, then that would go to Mr. Christman if he chose not to pay that.
But those four acres could be the best of the 22.
But I, but I know they're not. I know they're not from the plats and everything that I've seen.
Well, for Mr. Christman to buy it, he must have some kind of a concept that it can be developed.
I think if you look at that property, if you, if you look around the perimeters, the only way to really develop it is you have to extend the existing roads that are coming out of the neighborhoods that attach to it, that touch upon it. You extend those in, and then you can develop the outer perimeter, because you really cannot develop the middle. That creek runs right through the middle of that. And so if you can build up some of that property along the perimeter, then you probably have some, I don't know what the number might be, six, eight, nine acres of developable land around the perimeter. But there's, I don't think there's any question that in the middle of that property, you're not gonna be able to develop that. There's never gonna be 22 acres worth of homes in that property. I can, I can.
Homes along the creek.
Ms. Klein, one question.
Yes, Mr. Hyatt.
After all this, this is an easy one, Ed. I apologize for not asking earlier.
No, sir.
When you originally did the prorata distribution between Carrollton, Denton, and Lewisville?
Yes, sir.
What were the, what was the basis of that prorata distribution?
Well, we, what I did was, if you look on page two of my letter, the $90,000 that's to the city of Carrollton, for example.
But how did you calculate the distribution percentages?
I totaled up all the taxes owed, and then I took the portion that was your portion, and that came up with a prorata percentage.
So when you originally did it in 2005, you took the taxes that were owed in 2005?
Ask me, say that again.
You said, I mean, that's awarded a judgment in 2005, and you distributed them to the city and the county and the school district based on the taxes owed in 2005?
No, I took them based on the taxes they are today, as if you were to file your own lawsuit, because that's really the universe we're in right now.
On the second page?
Yes, sir. I'm sorry, on page three. No, I'm talking about on page two.
Okay. On page two, those were the taxes that were owed to those entities under the judgment in November 2005. If we had been participating at that time.
Right.
And you would have known then what you know now.
Right.
You would have included us in that list.
Right.
And distributed our share of taxes that were owed in 2005. Correct?
Had you been in that, had the Carrollton Farmers Branch been in the lawsuit, then it would have reshuffled all the calculations, because then now Denton wouldn't have received 40-something thousand, and some of that money would have been redistributed. We know that the universe is the 125 minus those costs.
I guess what I'm asking, Ed, is on page three, is the redistribution based on the 2005 values for the city and the county and the Lewisville?
Today's is based on today's dollars and today's, the picture of what the district looks like today if Dan were to file a lawsuit today. He would be going after $23,000. And so that's what I valued or based that on, what the world looks like today relative to the district. Because that's what we're here about today, is what's on your books right now. So we know there was a significant adjustment by DCAD, because they were trying to correct a huge value discrepancy between what Dallas Appraisal District valued the property versus what Denton had it at. And that's another problem with this whole property, is it sits in two different jurisdictions, you have two different entities taxing it in two different ways, and the discrepancy was huge.
And the last question I've got, Ed, who provided information to the Lewisville ISD that led them to believe it was in their interest to abandon any rights to the property?
I don't know that. I mean, I don't know who the person was that went before the board, because I wasn't there.
Any other questions or comments on this item at this time? Should I presume that we'll discuss this in closed session under item, agenda item five? Okay. At this time, we could either take a break, or we could go and try to cover 3E before we go into closed session. What is the preference of the board? Would you like, because we'll have to take a short break to go into closed session, so y'all wanna go straight on with 3E?
Yeah.
Okay. Discussion of, 3E is discussion of student athletic insurance for 2012, 2013.
Ms. Klein, members of the board will be brief, I think you're familiar with it already, and this is just to give us some specific direction so that we can either go out and solicit proposals for alternative insurance, or we continue with what we've had in the past, and just, we have an extension agreement with our current coverages. If we elect to continue providing it for the athletes at no cost to them, we can execute that as an extension, which is relatively easy. But if we're not gonna do that, we need to begin the process in the relatively near future to solicit proposals for new insurance for that elective coverages. The cost to, would be shifted from the district to, to parents who elect to buy this additional coverage if we make this, if we make this change. We've provided you a list of some other school districts. You'll, you see in that list that we would not be alone in either decision. This is, this is a decision that some districts provide coverages and some districts don't. There's not any kind of trend of type of districts that do and those that don't. It's just a choice and decisions that districts have made to support their student athletes and their families.
Board members, any questions or comments for Mr. Hart?
Is this an action item that we need to vote on?
It is not an action item. We're just asking for some dialogue, and from that dialogue, we'll have some direction so that we'll know what actions to take in the next couple of weeks.
We'll bring back in May, you know, the, I guess, the results of the direction you give us and calculate it into the budget.
I would like to see us continue with insurance, but at the option of parents paying a fee.
And that's what we're actually bringing to, that would save the district $100,000.
Board members, any other discussion?
Of the thought process, that we have a portion of our population that can't afford insurance.
That's true.
And I think that we should make available some coverage. We have a student participating in an athletic event, breaks a leg, breaks an arm, sprains an ankle. My leaning is that we provide something to defray that cost. I did some quick calculations. If we have 2,000 students participating, if it costs us $100,000, it's 50 bucks a student for the kid who breaks a leg or something, that's my leaning.
I think we need to keep in consideration that we're one of the few districts that doesn't charge for participation in athletics right now. And we've been very fortunate and able, and for our students to be able to participate without having to pay a fee. And so I think that a nominal fee for insurance, most of those students would be able to come in, unless we wanna consider those items free and reduced lunch, because, you know, I definitely think we need to charge a fee and continue with the insurance.
And let's try to, I think if I hear right, we'll bring this back as a separate item, though, in that budget, so that the board can.
What we will do, and it'll just be, it takes a little effort on our part, but what we'll do is we'll go ahead and prepare a solicitation for separate coverages, but that will not preclude you from choosing either way still at the next meeting, but it will become an action item for the next meeting. Thank you.
So at this time, we're at item four, comments from board members. For A is comments regarding posted agenda items. Board members, are there any further comments regarding any of the posted agenda items so far? At this time, then we're moving to item five. Item five is closed meeting is authorized under Texas Government Code, including but not limited to section 51.071, consultation with attorney, 51, 551.072 real property, 551.074 personnel matters, 551.076 security devices, 551.082 school children, district employees disciplinary matter or complaint, 551.0821 personally identifiable student information, 551.084 investigation. 5A is pursuant to sections 551.071 and 551.072, consultation with attorney and deliberations concerning a settlement offer in regard to Carrollton Farmers Branch ISD versus SIR Investments Inc., case number 2010-0918-367. 5B pursuant to section 551.071, Texas Government Code, consultation with district's legal counsel concerning legal and procedural issues related to termination of probationary contract at end of the current contract period. And 5C pursuant to section 551.074, Texas Government Code, deliberations concerning recommendation to terminate probationary contract of Mr. Kyle Larkhart at the end of the current contract period. And the board will now recess this open session and reconvene in a closed session for agenda item 5A, B, and C. No voting will take place in the closed meeting. Any action the board wishes to take as a result of discussions in closed session will take place in open session after the board reconvenes in the open meeting. It is now 10:41. We will convene in closed session at 10:51. Thank you.
Funny good old days.
Good old days.
2010.
Well, they finally got it. What are they doing with, what's there now? What are they doing?
No, they're just putting the road on the outside.
Well, no, I agree with them, but.
That's right. And they're doing all the, they did the beautification.
We're ready, Mark.
I remember that, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. We will reconvene this meeting in an open session at 11:27 PM for agenda item 3D. Consider all matters related to a settlement offer in regard to Carrollton Farmers Branch.
You can do either order.
Okay. Carrollton Farmers Branch ISD versus SIR Investments Inc., case number 2010-0918-367. Board members, are there any, was there anything disgusting in closed session that we would like to take action on? Mr. Shore?
Yes. First, I want to thank Mr. Lopez for his time and his elegance. I wish I could say the same about Mr. Beard. I move that we decline the opportunity to accept the settlement offer in the case style Carrollton Farmers Branch ISD versus SIR Investments in 2010-0918-367.
Ms. Grebner, do you need Mr. Shore to repeat that? Did you get it?
I'm trying to write it to.
I have moved to decline the opportunity to accept the offer by SIR Investments Inc.
Well, it's not really true, because it wasn't by them. It was by unrelated entity.
And is that the end?
No, but that we decline to, I move that we decline to accept the settlement offer in the case style Carrollton Farmers Branch ISD versus SIR Investments.
I second that.
All those in favor? All those opposed? All those opposed? That is unanimous. Item 6A, consideration of possible action regarding recommendation to terminate probationary contract of Mr. Kyle Lockhart at the end of the current contract period. Mr. Goode?
I move that in the board's judgment, it's in the best interest of the district to terminate the probationary contract employment of Mr. Kyle Lockhart at the end of his current contract period, and I further move that the board president be authorized on behalf of the board to provide Mr. Lockhart with timely written notice of the board's action.
Board members, Mr. Shore?
Seconded.
All those in favor? All opposed? That is unanimous. At this time, it appears we are at the close of our agenda, and it is 11:30. And are there any other questions, comments? Hearing none, seeing none. We are adjourned at 11:30.